Hello, thank you for joining us tonight. December 19th, the ZBA meeting for the town of Merrimack. If you could all please rise for the pleasure of the allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Rod, if you could read the preamble, please.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We will proceed with the petitions in the order they are listed on the agenda unless the board deems it appropriate to take a petition out of order. State law and local ordinances set out the criteria that must be met in order for this board to grant a request. The minimum requirements are outlined on the form provided by the Community Development Office, and the petitioner should proceed with this format to provide adequate justification for the board to grant their request. The chair will then open the meeting to hear testimony either for or against the request. All discussions will be between the speaker and the board. Please be respectful of all, and in the interest of time refrain from repeating previous testimonies. No new documentation will be accepted by the board for consideration this evening, but the board reserves the right to ask for additional testimony at any time. After hearing the facts from all parties regarding petition, the chairman will close the public hearing, and the board will deliberate and vote on the request before moving on to the next petition. Please, at this time, turn up all cell phones and pagers.
Thank you. The next zoning board meeting is scheduled for January 30th, 2019. Couple of housekeeping items. When you come up, there is a, should be a clipboard up there, make sure that you sign in. Is that the clipboard? Okay. Make sure you sign in and state your name clearly. Also, make sure the light is on, on the microphones.
Bright.
Bright light, it's already green. For anybody, is, anybody who's going to be speaking tonight, for a petition, against a petition, about a petition, if you're gonna talk at all, and you just stand and raise your right hand, please.
Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
Alright, have a seat. Alright. Um, we are going to be appointing, as we have two full-time members that are out this evening, we'll be appointing Rod, who will be sitting in for Fran, and Drew will be sitting in for Rich. Okay? Um, also, given the petitions that are here, that are being heard this evening, and in discussion with the petitioners, I am going to move some petitions around, expedite some of the shorter petitions. The first one is actually a, the petition is being moved, and this is for Craig Lapena, applicant-owner variance under section 3.05 of the zoning ordinance to prevent existing manufactured home to remain 31 feet from the rear property line, whereas 40 feet is required in the construction of an addition to an existing detached garage 17 feet from the rear property line, whereas 40 is required. Parcel is located at 58 Babusick Lake Road in the R4 Residential in Aquifer Conservation District's tax map 5C lot 848, case number 2018-44. This has been put forward as a request for continuance to the January 30th, 2019 meeting. Do I have a second?
I'll move.
All move, all in favor? Aye. Petition is moved. That's five.
I move.
And then 500, that petition is moved. Next petition, we are gonna be taking, we again, as I mentioned, we are gonna take this one out of order based on what we're hearing this evening. So when I call your name, come on down. Sign Design Inc., petitioner, and 57-59 Daniel Webster Highway LLC, easement owner, variance under section 17.10.3 of the zoning ordinance to allow the installation of a 63 square foot off-premise within an existing easement for the benefit of 59 Daniel Webster Highway, replacing the existing ground sign on the property, ground sign, whereas a maximum of 48 square feet is permitted. The parcel is located at 55 Daniel Webster Highway in the I-1 Industrial and Aquifer Conservation District's tax map 2E lot 006-02, case number 2018-45. You sign in? Oh wait, just make sure the mic's on. Check the light. Is it bright, is it bright green? Okay, you pull it a little closer. Alright. You can pull it closer, too. Oh, no, 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 hold on, hold on. It's not. No, no, hold on. Okay. How's that?
That's better.
Alright. Sorry. Alright.
Sorry, Scott Clement was Sign Design.
Okay.
And like you stated, we're here to ask for relief pertaining to a 48 square foot, we would like to exceed that going to 63 square foot sign.
Okay. Do you finish signing? I'll let you finish signing before you get into it. You want to just give us a quick overview of what we're looking at, and then we're gonna go into the five points. Stop between each one as we may have questions.
Okay.
So just give us a quick overview of what we're looking at.
Okay, essentially, there is a, currently, there's a sign. It's, it's on the property of 55, who granted an easement for the sign, and so there's an existing sign there, that the panel itself is 48 square feet, the overall sign obviously is bigger, there's a structure to it. The height of this existing sign is roughly nine feet, and the width is roughly 12 feet. And we're looking to go in with roughly a 10-foot width, so about two feet shorter in width, and six feet in height, so almost three feet less in height. But as you calculate square footage, I don't think we're really calculating apples to apples, where one sign is calculated just as the face itself, and not the whole structure. The other sign is calculated as the whole structure.
If you could stop after each one, just in case there's any questions.
Take your time. Okay, point number one, granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interests. It looks like, as there's an existing easement recorded with the county to allow this sign, essentially, we're, we're proposing the larger, in theory, the larger sign to help with, the property has, it was, apparently, it was one tenant for years and years, a huge, huge building, it's been subdivided, so there's multiple tenants, there's a lot of trucking going on, in and out, and they're apparently wreaking havoc, not knowing where the property is, because it's, first of all, not representing current tenants, there's no address on that particular sign, and therefore, the, the large trucks are going past, past the driveway or whatever, they're finding, trying to find areas to turn around, according to the tenants disrupting other neighbors as to not knowing where to go. So, I guess, back to number one, I think it would be in the public's interest to maybe help address and ease this condition. Any questions?
Who you representing?
Sign Design, we, we're manufacturing the sign, so, but we're here, repres, well, ultimately, it would be Clary Properties, that seems like there's a lot of players because there's so many tenants.
Well, that's a question.
Yeah.
You're gonna do the sign.
Correct.
But who do you represent?
Well...
You don't know?
I guess it would be considered Daniel Webster Highway Merrimack LLC is technically who I'm representing.
And who do they, what do they own?
They, they own the property, they own the...
What property?
The property at 57-59 Daniel Webster.
Okay.
Highway.
Number two?
Okay, number two, the spirit of the ordinance is observed, because we're proposing the removal, replacement of existing that currently has an easement, and is 15 square feet larger.
Any questions? I take it you're not the one that wrote this?
I did not write the mic.
Okay, 'cause I got handed this on the way out the door.
Yeah, yeah, it seems like I apologize for that.
Okay. Out of curiosity, are you physically gonna be one of the guys there putting the sign in, or?
No.
No.
I will not.
Is the owner here?
The owner of 57-59?
The property?
No. The owner of the property's not here.
Any questions on number two, spirit of the variance? Alright, number three?
Okay, number three, granting the variance would do substantial justice because, as a larger sign, will help direct deliveries to the location where they will need to go, thus alleviating the need for vehicles from breaking hard, performing U-turns, to gain entry, etc., just essentially, basically, what I summarized in question once.
Questions? Number four?
For the following reasons, the value of the surrounding properties will not be diminished, the values will not be diminished, as the signage is an upgrade from the existing, and I don't know if you've had a moment to look at the layout, but in my opinion, certainly a better-looking sign, and again, it's three feet shorter and two feet less in width as well, but I think, I think it's really an upgrade to the, the look and feel of the whole property.
Number five, unnecessary hardship?
Unnecessary hardship, okay. Going to special conditions, the property that diminishes it from the other properties in the area, denial of the variance would result in unnecessary hardship. No fair substantial relationship exists between the general, okay, the current property does not have frontage on the highway due to the topography and, okay, so basically, yeah, the, the current property is, is tucked behind another building, so 57 exists in front of 59, 59 sits behind this, and so their hardship is visibility without an address out at the street, without seeing tenant names, etc., just the visibility, you wouldn't even know where 59 is, you'll see 55, you'll see 57, but 59, again, is gonna be lost and therefore causing the, the issues for the tenants.
And then number two, proposed use is reasonable because?
As deliveries to this address result in a safety issue, as the existing signage is out of date, and no longer exists there at the property, so it's reasonable, because now it's representing, first of all, an address, which is highly important for the truckers, and the tenants' names on, on the sign itself, so it just alleviates essentially trucking, but I'm, I'm not sure if there's a customer representation there, but certainly, you know, deliveries and, and whatnot.
Any questions on unnecessary hardship? Go ahead.
The owner is 57-59 DW Highway. Who is that?
Who is it?
I mean, you're the sign company, but you're not the owner, who's the owner?
The owner, it's often with the sign company, we don't know the owner, we know the tenants that wanna buy the sign, the owner signs, the owner's behind the seeds, where we don't have necessary contact, other than signing the form, saying yes, we see it, we, we approve it.
So I'm looking at a sign here that has six different companies listed at 59 DW Highway.
Correct.
Are they tenants of the owners?
Correct.
Is there anybody that's a tenant of 57?
Yes.
Kelly?
Just, in our assessing database, it's listed as 57-59 DW Highway as the address that he needs to use for the application. That's, that's the reasoning why it's like that.
Not coming down on you, it's just, I mean, you got stuck, you got handed something on the way out the door.
I realize that.
And it's, and quite honestly, the owners of that property, they should be here tonight instead of you, I mean, no offense, because they're the ones that are doing the sign, they kinda put you in a hard place, I'm not coming after you, it's just, you know, negligence by the owners for doing what they should be doing. But, you know, that being said, do we have, are there any other questions regarding this petition?
Where are the owners?
Where, is that?
Yeah, where are the owners?
Well, again, I don't know who the owners are, I, I'm, I'm working with the tenants.
Which tenant?
Well, we're working with Clary, who's representing the, the ownership. It's just beyond, it's something I don't, yeah, I don't know.
So the owners want this new sign?
Really, the tenants want the new sign, the tenant, it, it's the motivation of the tenants, they're in there, they're...
So the owner doesn't care?
Not saying that the owner doesn't care, I, I think a lot of people care, and we're just trying to alleviate what, what's taking place out there.
We're not getting the owners here tonight, so it's just, look at it the way it is, I mean, I think Community Development needs to make a phone call down, but, I mean, that's, that's neither here nor there, I mean, it's the poor, poor showing by the owners, but that being said, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move to the public.
That's fine.
Alright, is there anybody that wants to speak in favor of this petition? Is there anybody who wants to speak against this petition? Alright, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Barring the fact that we all know that the owners are absent, and they should be here, and we've kinda made that on record, and it's gonna be on television as well, so they can watch it to their delight. Is there any other conversations regarding this particular petition and/or motions?
I motion that Sign Design Incorporated, the 57-59 Daniel Webster Highway LLC, should be granted variance under section 17 comma 10.3 of the zoning ordinance to allow the installation of a 63 square foot off-premise within an existing easement for the benefit of 59 Daniel Webster Highway, replacing an existing ground sign on the property, ground sign whereas a maximum of 48 square feet is permitted. Parcel is located at 55 Daniel Webster Highway in the I-1 Industrial and Aquifer Conservation District's tax map 2E lot 002-02, case numbers 2018-45.
Do I have a second? Any other discussion? And how do you feel?
You tell the owners they should have been here.
Please.
I'll relay, absolutely relay that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? 500. Just relay that for us, we'd appreciate it.
Absolutely will.
Thank you very much, have a good holiday.
Thanks a lot. Do I need to collect anything?
Nope, you're all good to go, just collect your stuff.
You, you have 30 days that somebody can contest this.
We will send you a decision letter via email.
Okay, thank you.
That the owners should respond to.
Have a good evening, thank you. Alrighty, let's get into the next. Alright, just make sure I get the right one. Yep, I have to read it in, okay. Next, Selco Partnership DBA Verizon Wireless applicant and Brett W. Vaughan Revocable Trust owner, special exception under section 2.02.1B2 of the zoning ordinance to allow the installation of a telecommunications tower within a residential district. Parcel is located at 123 Wilson Hill Road in the R1 Residential District by the zoning map, tax map 4A lot 023, case number 2018-41. This item is continued from the November 28 meeting of the ZBA. Just state your name and sign, I think you've already signed in, so...
Yeah, I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. For the record, my name's Victor Minugian, I'm with McLean Middleton Professional Association at 900 Elm Street, Manchester, New Hampshire, appearing tonight on behalf of Selco Partnership, doing business as Verizon Wireless, and the owner of the property is Brett, Brett W. Vaughan, trustee of the Brett W. Vaughan Revocable Trust, and we've submitted with our application a letter of authorization for us to submit this on his behalf for the proposed installation on his property. We've submitted a lot of documents to support our application. If needed, the following people are here to speak on the application. Brian Ross, he's the site act from Structure Consulting Group on behalf of Verizon Wireless. Derek Creaser, he's from Hudson Design Group, the engineering firm that prepared the zoning drawings. Keith Valente from C Squared Systems, who prepared the RF report that shows the need for this site and the gap in coverage in this part of Merrimack. Dr. Donald Hayes, who prepared a RF emissions report to talk about the emissions that the tower will put out. Doug Shidell from Modeling Specialties, who prepared a sound report, and finally, Mark Corenti from Fair Market Advisors LLC, who prepared the real estate valuation report.
Not, not to interrupt you, and I appreciate the introduction, I do want to point something out.
Yes.
That's important. I was gonna point it out in the public hearing, but I want to point it out now, since you kinda touched upon it in your introduction, and then this is for anybody who's gonna be speaking for or against this petition, it's very important to know this, and we are going to be sticking to this. Due to federal law, Telecommunications Act of 1996 applies to local government decisions for wireless communication facilities. Of particular note is that the FCC, through that act, preempts local governments from considering any radio frequency RF emissions as part of a sitting decision. This means that the zoning board of adjustments for Merrimack, as well as the planning board, cannot consider, again, cannot consider RF emissions in their perceived potential health impacts in any part of the decision in making on any wireless communication facility application. So I, I know there's probably people that are gonna speak maybe for or against this evening, obviously, we have a presentation from the folks as well, but we're not gonna be getting into the health concerns regarding RF emissions based upon that Federal Act of Communication Act 1996. Sorry, you can continue, please.
Thank you. So tonight, we appear seeking two forms of relief, as the agenda states. The first one is the special exception under section 2.02.1 capital B2, to install telecommunications tower in a residential district, and I'll mention the second, which will follow, this one is a variance, section 2.02.1 capital B2 colon C, to allow the proposed telecommunications tower in a residential district, not camouflaged. So, the way I want to start is I want to show the drawings that we have, and I'll start with page C3 of the drawings that we submitted, which show the layout and the access to the tower compound. So we're coming off of Wilson Hill Road, over the existing driveway, to a point where the driveway ends and takes a right to the residential property, and we will continue straight and put a gravel access driveway, and take a right near the end of the property to the 100 by 100 leased area. The proposed compound within that leased area is 50 by 50 feet. Our setbacks are in the rear, 125 feet to the property line, which is the required setback in your zoning ordinances, has to be the height of the tower, and then to the, let's see, north, to the west, we're 600 feet from the property line, and to the east, we're 1,844 feet from the property line, and from Wilson Road itself, we're set back almost a third of a mile, which is 1,483 feet. Next drawing I wanna show is sheet A1, which shows the actual compound, again, 50 by 50 compound, and inside here, we will have the tower located in this position, over here is the propane tank, which will run the backup generator, and this is the area where the equipment is. In the old days, a lot of the carriers had big buildings, which we called shelters, now they're standalone equipment cabinets, so the equipment cabinets and the generator are in this area, and all the open area is to allow for up to three additional carriers, because your ordinance says if your tower is over 100 feet, and this is proposed at 125 feet, we have to have room for three carriers plus us, so that the tower is built to structurally accommodate three additional antenna arrays on the tower itself, and there's room on the ground space, the compound, for four addition, three additional carries, excuse me, and their equipment. I, I do want to note one small change that we're proposing to do, and, and the drawings don't show it, and when we did the photo sims, it was clear that down here, as this is drawn, the 50 by 50, we'll take out some trees in this area that we decided we don't want to take out, so if you approve this, and we go to site plan review, we're planning to just shift the compound north eight feet, still within our lease area, and the tower will not move, the center, the tower is still in the same spot, but what that will do is if we shift the fence area eight feet, will save a lot of trees here, and there aren't, we won't be taking the trees on that side as much, so that'll help hide it more with the natural screening. So that, that's the proposed installation, and the equipment that will be on the tower, on the 125-foot tower, located on map 4A lot 23 at 123 Wilson Hill Road, will have six panel antennas on the, on, on the tower, let me switch to the next one, sorry. So the tower will have six antennas in this array, two per sector, let me try, let me try that again, six panels in three sectors, I'm sorry, nine remote radio heads, which are in this cluster as well, one junction box, and the rest of the equipment, as I described, is in this fenced-in compound down here. Additionally, we have submitted photo sims. I will run through the photo sims for everybody here and at home, so the photo sims we did, there were a total of 12 photo sims taken after a balloon test was done in, sometime in October, I believe, after the leaves were down, and of the 12 locations that I'm going to go through, it was not visible from nine, it was obscured visibility from two, and it was visible... It was obscured visibility from two, and it was visible from one. And bear with me for my techno skills here. So this is the overview of the locations that we took the 12 photos from. And as I scroll down, the balloon was not visible from this location, and this is location one at 153 Wilson Hill Road. Location, photo number two, also not visible from this location, was taken from 136 Wilson Hill Road. Photo number three was taken from 117 Wilson Hill Road, also not visible. Yes, go to the visible one.
Where are you on the criteria?
Because we're going to, so there's criteria for the special exception for the tower, and we're actually going to be hearing this separately. We're going to be hearing the tower first, and then we're going to talk about camouflage. If that goes through, then we're going to talk about camouflage. So we're going to treat these as two separate petitions as opposed to one. What I'd like to do is I'd actually like to get into the special exception, where you have A, B, C, D, and E for point one, you have a couple of points for point two, and then you have three and four. Need to get those read into record, as well as be able to maybe discuss further, you know, where the plans are, and if there's specific questions from the board, would be addressed at those time before opening up the public hearing, so.
So do the special exception criteria?
Yeah, if you could start with applicant shall meet the approval criteria set forth, and then there's A, B, C, D, and E, and there may be questions in between. If we could get that into record, I would appreciate that.
So under A, the requirement states that the specific site is an appropriate location for such a use or uses in terms of overall community development. Under your ordinance, the purpose of the zoning ordinance and the building code is to promote health, safety, convenience, and general welfare of the town of Merrimack, and to make it an attractive place to live. This tower is being placed in a heavily wooded area, and in an area where there is no service, no coverage, there's a gap in this area. So by fulfilling and filling that gap, even though it's a residential zone, it will increase the coverage, and it'll help with safety, convenience, and general welfare to the residents and the public safety personnel of the town.
I have no problem.
Questions? B, please.
The use, as developed, will not adversely affect the neighborhood and shall produce no diminution of real estate values. Our statement says that the facility will not adversely affect the neighborhood or diminish real estate values in a neighboring area. Studies have been done that show real estate values are not diminished by wireless installations. And in fact, many people want to live in an area that has cell coverage. And is, to supplement those reports that I've cited and the cases that I've cited, we submitted Exhibit 7, which is a real estate valuation report that, I gotta go back to That he indicated in his conclusion that the proposed tower will have no measurable impact on surrounding property values due to the proximity or visibility, due to proximity or visibility. So we feel we meet that criteria as well, based on that.
Excuse me, sir. Any questions? Okay.
C, there will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians. Verizon will perform infrequent maintenance visits to the facility, which remains unmanned after construction. The visits to the site after construction is completed is one small pickup truck, probably once a month, to look at the facility, see if anything's wrong, test some of the equipment. And the facility provides no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians, and has no adverse impact on the Merrimack's infrastructure because of where it's located.
So now are you building an access road out from Wilson Hill Road, or is this going through a property? How are they getting out to the tower?
The, it's going through the existing driveway that goes up to the landowner's house.
Okay.
So we're going right over that. We have an access easement for access and utilities until we hit the left side of the rear of his house, and then we hit a wooded area. And there's a section up there, maybe a couple hundred feet, that will build a gravel drive to the tower site. We have an easement.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm sorry.
All right, that's fine. D?
D, that adequate parking area is provided for motor vehicles on the premises. Again, one pickup truck, and there's more than adequate parking on the property for our vehicle to make inspections.
E?
A buffer shall be erected and maintained to screen existing residential uses. Buffers by, maybe by fences, dense plantings of suitable trees and shrubbery, or naturally occurring shrubs and trees. We submit that there's naturally occurring vegetation in the form of trees and other vegetation that already provides a substantial buffer at the property. And from the photo sims that I was going through, it's not visible except from one location, far away from the golf course. So we submit that it meets that criteria.
Okay, number two, this facility substantially complies with Merrimack's new tower provisions?
Sure. The first prong is that the tower shall be set by, from the property line, by a distance equal to the height of the tower. As I indicated, the rear is 125 feet, so that meets this criteria.
Questions on number one? Number two?
Accessory facilities must satisfy minimum zoning setback requirements. The facility complies with your minimum zoning district setbacks, as I indicated on the attached plans in the beginning of my presentation.
Number three?
Tower shall maintain a neutral, non-reflective color so as to reduce visual obtrusiveness. The, what we're proposing to do here is paint the monopole brown until the tree line ends, and above that, it will be a neutral, usually a flat gray, non-reflective to reduce visual obtrusiveness. I can't say a word today. So the bottom blends in with the tree trunks, and the top light gray blends in with the skyline.
Next one?
For security purposes, towers and facilities shall be enclosed by a minimum six-foot fence. We're enclosing it with an eight-foot fence.
Next one?
All utility buildings and structures accessory to a tower shall be screened from view and by suitable vegetation from any adjacent residential zone property or public roads. Again, as I stated earlier, the natural screening of the growth in trees and the chain link fence will hide this installation.
Number six?
Any proposed communications towers shall be designed, in this case, if it's over 100 feet, for three additional users. And as I indicated, we are complying and building the structure to accommodate a total of four carriers.
Applicants will comply with this requirement, so number seven?
Seven, twice yearly inspections and bonding requirement. Again, the applicant will comply with that requirement as written.
And then, number eight?
Number eight, permits required. We will obtain all the necessary permits that are listed here and will comply with this requirement.
Any questions? Any final comments?
No, other than if you want me to get into the other submissions, I will, but we've submitted them, and we would ask that you approve the special exception.
Okay. Any questions before we go to public? Yes.
In your introduction, you had mentioned about propane tanks for backup?
Yes.
There must be generators in there. What kind of noise will be?
So the noise report, we submitted the sound assessment, that's in tab eight. So it's a propane generator that's in the compound where the equipment is, that center compound I pointed to. The generator will run once a week during the day. We'll set it anytime you want. We usually set it for early afternoon. And when it's running, the report said that when it's tested during the daytime, it's 45 decibels at the northern property line, and 38 decibels at the planned subdivision below us. So the houses that will be built below us will be 38. And then the northern point, where it's 125 feet, will be 45 decibels, and that would comply with the state requirements for noise levels.
This is just to exercise the generator once a week?
Yes, it doesn't run.
That's fine.
Unless there's a power outage. That's just to test, make sure it's working.
That's just the normal weekly exercise.
Just like a home generator does, yeah.
Funny.
Hey, we're on the subject of the generator. Propane fired.
That's correct.
Section eight, page 10, is a diesel-powered 30 KW generator is the example in this packet. If it's going to be propane LP, you got the wrong page in this book.
Which attachment are you referring to?
Section eight of your.
Of the submitted?
Proposal, page 10.
Talks about a diesel-fired generator.
That's an error. The plans have it as propane, and the testing was done as propane, that the sound assessment.
Joe, we have the wrong page.
I apologize for that, yes.
There's probably not much difference in the DBs on the, between the propane and the diesel, it's just not the right page.
I wouldn't think so.
You got the right page, you got the wrong fuel.
There's nothing else? You can fold up some of your stuff, and I think some people may be speaking for or against. Is there anybody that'd like to speak for this petition? Is there anybody out there that'd like to speak against this petition? If you'd like to speak against the petition, if you could come down and sign in, please, and then state your name. While you're doing that, I'm going to read into record a, I don't know, butter that is speaking against this petition, so I'm going to read this into record. So if you want to sign in, just give me a second, and I'll get right to you. So this is from Dan Ricker. He said, unfortunately, cannot attend the zoning board meeting this evening. He is in opposition of this item. He would question the need for the cell tower. Currently, the FCC does not require that all cell towers be registered. However, I was able to find two registered cell towers in Bedford, New Hampshire, that are, that are, and five registered cell towers in Merrimack. And there will be four registered cell towers in Goffstown. Could not find registered cell towers in Amherst or Milford. But as he had mentioned further, they don't need to be registered, so he assumes that at least one in that area. A cell tower can cover approximately 35 to 45-mile radius. Verizon states on their coverage map that was updated in 2018 that in the area of Wilson Hill Road, Merrimack, New Hampshire, there's 3G and 4G coverage at 100%. So I asked the board, why does Merrimack need another telecommunications tower that would be six in the town in the coverage that already has 100%? Also, wanted to mention in section 2.02.1B2A, here, the zoning ordinance states that an applicant shall meet the approval criteria set forth in A through EB above, part B above is to ensure that the buffer is required. And he's basically asking, how is the applicant proposing to address this requirement if he's asking for a waiver on the camouflage technology? So that's actually speaking against the second petition more so. Clearly, no buffer on the majority of the cell tower. Also, as part, the board is confident the construction of 150-foot cell tower would not be a scar on the land and reduce home values. Does the stigma of living near a cell tower not entice potential buyers to move near Wilson Hill Road? There may not be direct effect on the property value, but the underlying consequence of allowing this cell tower to be constructed could prove difficult in securing potential buyers for the area. Let it be clear, he basically goes on to state that he feels this is all about money. The applicant is broaching the possibility of adding telecommunications tower, not for the greater good of creating a more connected neighborhood, and he is doing it to finance his current subdivision development, stated by Mr. Ricker. He does not think the site is appropriate for telecommunications tower, and encouraged the zoning board not to grant the special exception on the installation of a telecommunications tower. I will let you address this, but first, we'll hear from this gentleman. If you could just state your name and.
Yes, Sean Lynch.
Okay, Sean.
My wife, Ashley, and I just moved in across the street from the proposed location. It was a new build. Brett Vaughn owned the land and was our realtor as well. He's not here, not here tonight, or, okay. So I was just, I was curious how many, I don't really know any of the neighbors, I was curious how many people are from the neighborhood.
You got to direct it this way, Sean.
Okay. Can you tell how many people raised their hands when I asked?
There's fair, I'm sure there's a fair number of people here, yeah.
So I don't have anything planned, I have just a couple of questions, just being a concerned neighbor that I wanted to bet out. But does anybody have concerns that's in the neighborhood with cellphone service?
That would be your neighbors, but again, you'd have to talk to them.
Okay, so we don't, you know, we're directly across the street. So I haven't done the research on what the gap is or things, but from our perspective and our perspective alone, it's not, it's not a concern of ours. Also, I was curious to understand what the, in regards to the property value and the lack of effect on property value, what the price range was for those houses. I know this, the development, the sub-development that Brett is building is fairly expensive houses across the street, and to the left of my house, they're building four houses as well, all north of $600,000. I know I'm sort of on the fringe. When we moved, we moved six months ago in June, it was a new build. And part of the criteria for me, and you may look at it a little bit weird, which I understand, was understanding the amount of cell towers, antennas, RF radiation, microwave radiation in the area. It's important to me, I've had some health issues, not here to argue health issues in my past because of that. So we chose that land in part because of the lack of cell towers in the area. But I was curious to understand, a lot of the evaluations that have probably been brought up by Verizon are historical, right? I don't know, they could be in the range of $600,000 in north, it could be, I don't know. But I think what it's lacking is going forward, as the public awareness grows over the health effects, again, I'm not arguing health effects, but there's clearly an awareness of it if it's in the FCC's telecommunications act, there's an awareness of it.
Right.
As that grows, again, I'm on the fringe of that, I think, now, if I'm sort of looking at that when I'm buying a house. I think over time, the public, this is going to become more and more important for the public, and they're going to seek out areas, especially as you get higher-income houses and people, are going to seek out areas away from cell towers. That's my own opinion, true or not, believe what you want. I think that's where the public is going. I think we've seen these scenarios with other larger corporations. Whether there's health effects or not, there's a perception of it, and over time, that awareness grows. So that's my concern from a financial economic impact on me personally and those in the neighborhood in the future. I was also curious, I don't know if I can, if I can ask this question, or if you're allowed to answer it, but I was curious how long, how long the lease is with Verizon, and how much time is remaining on the current lease? And if the property owner were to not renew that lease, or make Verizon aware that he was not going to renew the lease going forward, I don't know if it's a two-year, five-year, 10-year lease, what would happen? If he were to say to you today, to the Verizon team, I'm not planning If he were to say to you today, to the Verizon team, I'm not planning to renew the next lease, you're welcome to build with whatever time is remaining on the current lease. If he elects not to renew, if you would in fact move forward and build the cell tower on a shortened dead-end contract, I was just curious how much time was remaining on that?
That's a good question. We can find that out.
Okay. Those are, I mean, those are the primary topics I wanted to address. So, I don't know if you have questions for me, or, this is my first zoning board meeting, so.
That's okay.
Bear with me, but.
Welcome. Well, we can definitely, we can ask them about the, about the lease and what that would entail.
Yeah, but my final point, which I think you were leading to with propane, diesel, fire potential, but. And just some initial research I did on my drive in here, it looks like there was, last twelve years, there's been twenty-one fires related to cell towers and twenty-two falls that have caused damage as well. So, it's just a concern, the falls, I'm out of the fall range. I'm thinking about four hundred meters from it, but there's properties that are closer and there's a sub-development with, I don't believe anyone has purchased property there yet. I don't know if there's any representation from people who have purchased in advance, but they don't get an opportunity to speak here on this and the concerns they may have. And by the time they move in, I don't know if you have to disclose, there's a cell tower if it's not visible. I don't know the real estate law in the state, but I'm sort of sitting here speaking on behalf of all the people that are going to be moving in, I think, between that property, that subdivision, the ones next to me. There's at least eleven properties being built that there's no voice here to voice their concerns. So, I appreciate your time. That's all I had for now. Is, am I allowed to come back and speak if there's remaining thoughts?
Yeah, if you have any follow-up. Yep, thank you. Do you want to address that, or you want to go to the next?
So, I'm going to ask Keith Valente to first address the need for the site.
Well, actually, just want to address the lease question, then I want to get to the rest of the butters. So, if you want to address the question regarding, his question regarding the lease and how that works? Or do, you know what, why don't we just hear the, we're just going to go with the rest of the butters. Hold on a second. Is there anybody else that wants to speak against this petition? Victor, we'll come back to you. We'll come back to you. Yep, great stuff. I guess, best bet, make notes, then we'll address it all.
Good evening, and thanks for allowing us the opportunity to address the situation. So, I think it's less of, I'm sorry, excuse me, Michael Martin, 144 Wilson Hill.
Thank you, Michael.
Less of a against and more of also comments and have a few questions as to what's going on here. So, the first thing is, the tower at one hundred and twenty-five feet, does it have a light on top for aircraft warning?
If it's required, then yes, it would be.
Okay, because it's not on their pictures.
Okay.
So, that's something that would be a light nuisance where whether there's foliage or not, to see a bright red strobe. Now, I live directly, when it gets to his pictures, I'm right out my front door looking straight up at where Brett's house is. And I know the tower will be behind it. But, I have concerns with the sight lines. And a lot of these images and these filings were done before he's clear-cut vast tracts of land across the street, so a lot of that existing foliage, when this report was written and submitted, no longer exists. And if you drove down Wilson Hill Road, you would see vast tracts of trees gone to put in the subdivisions. I also noticed that on the maps that they were showing earlier, the subdivision that's already been approved for almost a year is not reflective in any of the maps that they're using. So, they're building fourteen lots on that property. So, are the setbacks then going to be in the right spaces, given where the property lines of the subdivision that have been approved by the board will exist?
That's a valid question.
So, that's another thing. I know he'll get to more, but the significant gap coverage also has me perplexed. I've been a Verizon customer for probably sixteen years. I lived at my residence for ten, and I get coverage. Their website does in fact say it has a hundred percent 3G and 4G. When you call their customer service, which I did earlier today to verify that, they said, yes, no problem. It's there. I have coverage, so I'm not sure where the gap lies. But, part of the premise of approving a tower is where there has to be a demonstrated significant coverage in gap. And I don't see that since I get it there. And I'm one of the closest people to where the tower is actually going to be constructed. So, I'd like to know how that was determined, that there was a coverage gap, a significant coverage gap that would imply safety issues? And I'd also like to know, where's the third-party independent source that verifies that? Because it's kind of like the fox in charge of the hen of house, when we say, the company that wants to put a tower says, well, there's a coverage gap, so a tower there must be. You know, I think that they owe it to the people who live here, you know, to explain to us what that coverage gap is and what the benefit and service will be for those of us who already have Verizon and already have coverage and have a cell signal and have a data plan and all that other stuff. So, those are the questions I have for now, and I'd like to come back based on the answers.
Sure, no worries.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Do you have others that like to speak against this petition?
Ladies and gentlemen, I am Fred Grimes, 117 Wilson Hill Road. I'm an abutter to this property.
Welcome, Fred.
And I am totally against it. Number one, thirty-five years ago, I purchased land on Wilson Hill Road because it's a nice residential area. I found when I paid my property taxes, I paid more per thousand than other people in Merrimack to live in this nice residential area. Since I have been living on Wilson Hill Road, Mr. Vaughn has gotten permits to have a beauty salon on his property. He's gotten a permit to have a flooring business on his property. Now, we're looking for a cell tower. When's the Dunkin' Donuts coming in? This is a residential neighborhood. It's not a commercial neighborhood. I don't see any need for a cell tower up there. And also, I went surfing on the internet today, and I got a survey here by the National Institute for Science, Law, and Public Policy indicates cell towers and antennas negatively impact interest in real estate properties. Ninety-four percent of respondents said a nearly nearby cell tower or group of antennas would negatively impact interest in a property or the price they would be willing to pay for it. Also, trying to end things off here, after the cell tower was put up, I don't know whether you people are aware of this new law that has come into effect. They can add twenty more feet on that tower without coming before you to get that extension on that self-hour, cell tower, so that cell tower can grow another twenty feet after it's already constructed. So, next, we have a hundred and forty-five foot tower now. That's all I really have to say. I'm just totally against it, and I just.
Thank you.
You're taking all the residency away from that neighborhood by allowing this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else that want to speak against this petition? Yeah, if you want to come, yeah, sure, if you want to come on up. Okay, all right. Victor, if you want to come back and address the butters directly to us, it would be great.
Sure, thank you again. So, I'll hit the points that I wrote, and if I missed any, let me know. So, the notice of lease is a public document with the owner. It's on record at the Registry of Deeds. It's a twenty-five-year lease. There will not be a light on the tower because it's not required. Over two hundred feet, you have to light a tower and certain circumstances when you're in an airport approach, but this doesn't apply, so it will not be lighted. The balloon test was done, I just double-checked, on October 29th. So, I don't know if, I can't imagine much clearing could have been done between then and when I filed this petition.
Of this year, right?
Of this year, October 29th of this year. That's why I said the foliage was already off, so that's a good indication for us, so people can see it without foliage and say, not say, well, you took pictures in the summer with foliage. And the other point that I will address is, the last gentleman talked about increasing the height of tower by twenty percent. He's correct. You can do that by right, by a building permit. But, we're building a hundred and twenty-five foot tower, which has room for four carriers. Right now, there's only four carriers, and there's been rumors of two merging to become one. So, even though a tower could grow by right like that, we don't see the necessity for it because there aren't enough wireless carriers left out there. There's four now, and this is built to take four. So, with that, I'm going to first have Keith address the need for this site and the gap issues. And I will also state that a tower's cost close to two hundred thousand dollars. My client wouldn't spend that money unless there's a need for it.
Question on that.
Yes?
He wouldn't spend the money if there weren't a need?
Verizon wouldn't.
Or if there weren't the income to justify it?
No, they do it because there's a gap in coverage and their customers.
No, I'm talking about your applicant.
I'm sorry, I don't understand the question.
You said your applicant would not build this unless there was a need for it.
I meant Verizon Wireless, not the owner.
Okay, that's different.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Hold on, hold on, I'm sorry.
The, one of the butters had mentioned about them being able to add twenty feet with no questions asked. And I think I heard you say that we have to, you would have to come in front of a board to do that?
No, under, under the FCC rules from the nineteen ninety-six telecommunications act, you can grow the tower twenty percent of its height by filing for a building permit and not have to come back to boards. And that's across the board nationally. But, what I indicated was, there's no need here. We're building a tower for four carriers, and there's only four commercial carriers right now that do the kind of work Verizon does.
Okay, thank you.
Do we? Do you have some indication as there is a need for this coverage?
I'm sorry, I misspoke. It's ten percent of the height by right.
I'm not worried about that.
When we're looking at the, we're coverage, is this?
Keith, that's Keith's job. He's got to do those.
Whoever is sitting there, you got, you got both there. We have people saying, I've got this coverage now when I'm sitting here. Why do we need a tower to augment if we've already got coverage? Unless it's to generate income?
Sure. So, just for the record, good evening. My name's Keith Valenti with C Squared Systems, business address is sixty-five Dartmouth Drive, Auburn, New Hampshire. We prepared the RF report. Those included in the package, it's dated September 25th. And that report discusses Verizon's wireless network in general and what the need in Merrimack is, particularly in western Merrimack, in the area, based on where their existing facilities are, the coverage provided by those existing facilities, and the gaps in coverage that, you know, Verizon's trying to fill with the proposed facility. So, within that report, there are five maps at the end. Those usually are of most interest, so we can jump to those. I think what I might do is, I'm going to go to the last map, which is Attachment E. This is a topography map or a 3D terrain map of the area. The coverage achieved from each site is dependent on a number of factors. The height of the facility, whether it's on a building, a water tank, or a tower, the height of the tent is above ground, the locations elevation relative to the surrounding topography, and then topography variations between each facility and whatever it's trying to coverage. So, what I'm showing here is the map, our modeling tool. This is a representation of the underlying topography database that it uses to calculate the coverage areas. And what I can do is just briefly introduce the map itself. Along the left side of the map in blue is Route 101. You have the Amherst, Merrimack Town border, and a brown dash running north-south through the center of the map. The right side of the map is Merrimack, left side being Amherst. We have a scale bar of two miles in the lower right-hand corner. The red and gray issues, those are your higher elevations. You can see where they stand out. And you have the lower-lying areas in darker blues and purple. So, for the majority of this map, you have the South Hegan River Valley, naturally low-lying area, surrounded by higher elevations all around. The locations.
Question for you. You're showing Continental Boulevard with no coverage?
This is not a coverage map. This is a terrain map, a representation of the topography of the area.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sure. So, also shown on the map are the locations of Verizon's existing facilities in the area. So, I can just quickly go through those. There's a site in the upper-left. It's a tree pole. Site's labeled Amherst. It's on Highland Drive. Moving over into Merrimack is Merrimack VII. That's a recently constructed facility on Turkey Hill. It's a tree pole that Verizon permitted a few years back and is now online. In the lower-right is a site labeled Merrimack. That's at the outlets. It's a lattice tower over there. In the bottom center of the map, labeled Merrimack VIII, that is a kind of a unipole, stealth pole at the Home Depot. Amherst II is a water tank facility. It's across the street from a substation. And then, the site labeled Amherst III is another tree pole located behind the Christ's Church of Amherst. And then, in the center, in blue, is the proposed site at 123 Wilson Hill Road, labeled Merrimack IX. So, that's helpful to kind of show you the topography challenges or impediments in achieving a contiguous network throughout this, throughout the area. So, if we can go back to the first map, which is Attachment A, what this shows is the reliable 4G LTE coverage provided by Verizon's existing facilities. And what we have here, and that's shown in green, it doesn't, doesn't mean as soon as you transition from green to white, you go out of service. It just means that the, the coverage levels get below a point where they're reliable and up to Verizon's standards to provide the 4G experience that their customers are demanding. So, our gap, in this instance, is effectively along Wilson Hill Road, all along Spring Road, over towards the intersection of 101, Amherst Road slash County Road, running east-west as well, and many of the surrounding residences in this area of western, western Merrimack. So, that's the gap of interest that the proposed facility is trying to fill. If we go to the second map, which is Attachment B, that shows how the proposed facility fills in the area with more robust coverage, fills in the gap in service, provides coverage to a large area, including the roadways, which are of importance. Along Amherst Road at the town line, traffic statistics number, I think it's a three-nine-hundred cars per day. And those two roads are, you know, main connectors, or secondary roads, rather, through this area. In addition to the vehicular traffic along these roads, the site will provide coverage to an additional twenty-five hundred people in the area that are presently in the gap that we described earlier. With wireless networks nowadays, devices are, they're really an indispensable part of many people's daily lives. Almost everyone has at least one device. Many people have multiple devices. Fifty percent of homes in the nation are now wireless-only. They've cut the cord altogether. So, wireless service is really important, not just for mobile users, but for people in their homes, for personal business and emergency uses. With that rise in usage, these facilities are challenged to keep up with all the demand. So, you can have a, you can have a site that covers a huge area, but if there's too much usage in that area, it's just as good as having service gaps. Because whether or not you have a lack of coverage or a lack of capacity, at the end of the day, someone's trying to download an email or make a phone call and they can't. The user generally doesn't care why. So, there's two instances, you know, coverage deficiencies and capacity deficiencies. So, what the next set of maps show is, what we're showing here is in, in different colors to kind of show what we call footprints of those existing facilities. So, you can see in yellow, we highlighted the two sectors of that Turkey Hill site in yellow. And that shows the extent of areas served by that facility. And that shows the, the extent of, of areas served by that facility. And then all the way down at the water tank site over in Amherst, that's shown in, in blue. And then in orange, you have the, the site behind the church, shown in orange. And then even the site at the outlets in red, we're, we're highlighting one sector directed towards the site. And what you have here is you just have a mishmash of really low, you know, fringe and unreliable coverage that, that creates problems. You know, we've heard, we've heard some, some comments that, well, you know, "I have service." You know, "Why do we need a site?" Well, the fact is that, you know, the, the topography where you, where you hit a horizon hill, you, you may have some degree of service, it's just not reliable, it's not up to the standard Verizon's trying to provide. So an, an additional need for the site is to effectively offload these surrounding sites, doing, doing whatever they can to get coverage into this area and kind of relax the, the burden on them. So what I show on the, the fourth map, which is shown in green, is this is the area that would effectively be served by the proposed facility. So that yellow area that you sho, that we showed on the previous map, it gets smaller. So it allows that, that site on Turkey Hill to better serve the users nearer to it and, and provide a more robust overall network. So those are the two kind of general coverage and capacity reasons for the proposed facility and why it's needed in the area. And then, you know, just to show the topography map again, those irregular coverage areas are largely defined by variable topography.
If you're allowed to build this tower, can you eliminate any of the other towers?
No.
Why?
The site serves its own purpose to, to cover that gap in service. The, the surrounding sites themselves, because of these topography obstructions in between them, they, they can't serve this area. These hilltops are effectively dividing lines of, of coverage. So if, if you have a hill in the middle and you have a site here and a site here-
But, but the green area I saw on the map, go back to one of the last ones you showed me.
This one?
No.
Nope.
Oh, the green area, okay, yep.
That covers a lot of the area that's already serviced by Verizon.
Right, and, and the purp-
And so you're, you're encompassing some areas that's already provided. So there's a very small area there that maybe not be covered significantly. I mean, I've had Verizon for 25 years, so I'm aware of coverage.
Sure. And again, so, so the four maps that we showed, you know, the first two were, were based on coverage, just the raw signal strength of reliability that Verizon needs to provide for their service. What these show here are, are the areas served, so it's not so much overlapping coverage. The purpose of these maps are to demonstrate how they, how they interact with the surrounding sites. So if I go to this, it, what's, as it is today, you can see how the, the proposed facility, it'll allow, particularly the Merrimack 7 facility on Turkey Hill, it'll allow, it'll diminish the burden that it, that it has today. It's trying to serve a very large area. So if we toggle to the next map, the green, you can see that yellow area shrinks. So it, it provides a, quite a, quite a large area of new coverage.
So you're, you're providing support for another Verizon site? Because I drive through these areas and I have coverage.
Right, so if we talk about coverage, again, it's all one network, so-
This, this site will support the other Verizon sites that are in town?
It'll help the other sites perform their jobs better in areas closer to them.
Even though they're performing acceptably now?
Well, if we go back to the first two maps, our gap in service shows a, a large area, the, the, basically the non-green or the white areas are underserved with, with just not enough service.
If I drive through those areas and I've got a Verizon phone, I have service.
You, you may have service, but it, again, what we're showing here is the, the requirements for reliable 4G LTE coverage. Just because you can, may or may, may make a call here, just drive a little further, you may not be able to. That's, that's not reliable service in Verizon's eyes, their customers don't expect that.
Is, is this the only site that you could put a tower to, for this coverage? I mean, that's a, I'm looking at the map right over your shoulder, same map, and that's a huge, big, white zone area you're trying to cover. Is that, is, is, is there any particular reason why this particular site is, is, is it more optimal? Or could it be put anywhere? Because I mean, there's a lot of open space around there that, you know, wouldn't be necessarily right in someone's backyard. I mean, is there any, is, is there any particular reason why this particular site?
So from, from a technical RF standpoint, I think it's helpful to go back to the topo map or the topography map. You can see it's, it's sitting up on a nice little knoll, so it, in doing so, it has a great view to the east, to the south, and then over into Amherst in, in this area. Because it does sit up on a hill, it allows us to do, or cover quite a large area with a relatively shorter sight. It's not, you know, 180 feet in some cases, it, it is 125 feet tall because it has advantageous ground elevation, which is why it is uniquely suited.
What about the two sp, spaces behind it?
Behind it, if to the left or-
Go up to the, to the right.
These ones here?
Yeah, there, I mean, those are-
Go here or go here?
Right, so if we were up here, what you'd have is, we would, we wouldn't be able to cover down into this South Heagan River Valley because the, the, the topography of the proposed location would, would block it. It would, now a site up here, it would, you know, serve up here and, and over here better than our proposed site, but the coverage objective is this area of Merrimack.
So what about here?
Over here, you'd have blockage over here along Wilson Hills.
Which, you don't have blockage now.
Well, we do, if we go back to, that's our gap, so this whole area would, would still remain as a whole.
Hold on one second, I'll get you back, I'll get back to you. All right, any further questions before we? It just, I, I mean, it just, I mean, this is the, I, I mean, it's kind of, you know, with, with technology, and I'm not an RF engineer by any means, but I, I mean, this is the only space that we could actually put this to, for, for coverage, I mean, based upon what exists or what Verizon could potentially build. I'm, I'm just, I'm just curious, that's all. It just seems like, you know, we've heard a couple of cell tower over, over the years and it seems like, you know, it has to be here or, why does it have to be there? I mean, you know, why can't it be, you know, why does, why does it have to be right there? I'm just kind of curious as to, that's why I asked the question about, you know, why is it have to be here or nowhere else or that type of thing? That doesn't sound like, I mean, you're saying because it's up on a hill.
That's the advantage of, of the site. I mean, I think it's important to keep in mind that there is, we can't just design these in, in a, you know, you know, padded room. You know, there's real world constraints, it's got to be leasable, constructable, you know, certainly zoning considerations and so forth. That's why there's a whole team dedicated to, to searching the area and coming up with, with what is, what is the best and most feasible site.
Thank you very much for everything. Victor, I had a question for you. So you, you did a lot of balloon shots, or not balloon shots, you did a lot of shots of the tower and, you know, where you see it and where you didn't. You know, you're at, you're at South Heagan Woods and, you know, in a couple of different places. Gentleman, and I'm sorry, I forgot your name, had said he lives right across the street from where that's come from. How come we didn't see a shot of what the tower would look like out his front door? He said that he can walk out his front door, he's going to see it. How, why didn't we see a shot of what the tower, because a lot of, and the reason I asked this, you know, a lot of, the reason I asked this is because a lot of what you're saying is that it's going to be camouflage, it's going to be hidden, it's not going to be seen except for over at South Heagan. Why, why wasn't a shot taken from this guy's front porch? Just curious.
We did have one from the, his driveway area. Yeah.
I mean, if you did, maybe I missed it, it was a lot of materials trying to go through.
Oh, the, the map? Right, so the first three, the, the red circles, where's the pointer? Those, those are across the street and this is the site. So we did do three and one, one-
So do you have the shot from one?
Sure.
I just want to see that one again, I was-
And it's not visible. This is, this is number one, 153 Wilson Hill Road.
That's 153 Wilson Hill Road?
It's not visible.
Is, is your mic on?
I'll get you.
Testing, yes.
Now it is, so keep, keep it close to you, please.
Yeah, so this is, the photo one is 153 Wilson Hill Road and it's not visible. Do you want to go to the second one?
Yes, I do.
136 Wilson Hill Road, not visible. And three is 117 Wilson Hill Road, also not visible.
When were these taken?
October 29th.
Okay.
No, most of it, the top foliage is gone, this is just some stragglers at the bottom that didn't fall off yet. If you'd like, we did take some more photo sims that haven't been submitted to the board, but I know how the board is on new evidence, but I do have photo sims on here that were taken later that show more vantage points. I can do that if you'd like.
Okay. Think we're gonna, I-
We can't.
Yeah, we can't at this point. I just want to double-check for sure.
Are you able to point?
I'll get, I'll get back to everybody. Go ahead.
The, the gentleman in the back there said he can see Mr. Vaughn's home.
Go back to photos?
No, this is at 117. You're at 117? I'm sorry, what was your address? Oh, I'm sorry, I thought he was 117, I was arguing.
Okay. I, I can't have you because you're not on mic, but I, I appreciate, thank you. Rod, you gotta, okay. So show us number one again. So that's the, that's the clearing, you're saying the tower is not visible?
That's correct.
Where, where would the tower be? Do we have a balloon up there?
Behind, behind here. And you can't see it because the balloon's behind there.
Okay.
Okay. So, so the middle of each site is the straight shot right to where the tower would be? So the balloon is hidden behind the trees there?
Well, right, so, and here's, and here's, and here's what we keep going back to, is that the pictures that you're presenting, like, you, you show me where your laser pointer is, there's a tree full of leaves there, which is great about six months out of the year, well, not even that, maybe five months out of the year. But I mean, when, you know, right now, I can't imagine that there's many leaves on that tree. So I, I see what you're saying, like, right now, yeah, you can't see the balloon. Well, in October, you couldn't see the balloon, but you could probably see the balloon now if you went out there now.
I have some pictures if you want to see right now.
If you, if you have, when were the pictures taken?
Today.
Today.
It'll take a second.
I want to see, I'll make an exception, I'll see the pictures from today. Hold on, hold on, please.
Can we take three minutes?
While, while you get that, we're going to take a three-minute recess, so if you need to-
...
So you have the pictures that you were taking today?
Uh, yes. So, um, w- we did additional photo sims actually, um, um, after a sidewalk we did with the landlord recently. So, um, we have, um, twenty-six pictures. These are all new, and these are taken today. And this first map gives you an idea of, um, where they're from. So, starting with number one, uh, in the landowner's driveway, um, and down the hill, um, into his property where the subdivision's going to be. And I, and I, and I also have a plan that we've overlaid the subdivision onto our zoning drawing, which I would need later for planning board. I can show that if you want. And then down the hill to Wilson Hill Road. So we have twenty-two pictures that I'm gonna go by.
Can you show the overlay?
You want to see that first?
Please.
So this is the overlay. Um, the engineers used the, uh, recorded approved subdivision plan. And, um, the red are the new created lots, and again, our, uh, access drive once, uh, onto his own, here, the subdivision road, Black Oak Road goes that way. We continue up his existing driveway to our site. So these are the photo sims we did. Would you like me to go back to the photo sims though?
Yep.
Okay, so the first photo is, um, taken from his driveway?
I, I'd just like to, um, introduce myself to the board. My name is Brian Ross. I work for Structure Consulting Group, 49 Brattle Street, Arlington, Massachusetts. So the, the first photo we're gonna go to is exactly where the existing, or our access road will veer off from the existing driveway.
Now, the balloon's up?
Yeah.
Yep.
So, we'll, we'll go to the first one where the access road will now veer off from the existing driveway. And you can see the balloon, um, behind the trees. And then, superimposed is the new wireless communications tower.
So they're referring to this as obscured because even with the trees, leaves off the tree, between tree trunks and the evergreens, it's very hard to see. But there it is.
Can you go down to Wilson Hill Road, please?
Yes. Here it is from Wilson Hill Road today.
Where's the balloon?
It's not visible.
Somewhere over here, but it's not visible.
Okay.
And this is right across from that, this is that gentleman's driveway?
This is 153.
Yeah, this is the entrance for our landowner's, um, property from Wilson Hill, Hill Road.
So, um, yes, it's, it's about seventy-five feet to the left or the west of the existing driveway going up to 123 Wilson Hill Road.
So you're on- What's, what, what about 153?
The, no photo was done from 153 today.
Because that says location, 153 Wilson Hill Road.
Understood.
You're on the west side of Wilson Hill Road at this point, correct?
We are on the west side of his 123 Wilson, Wilson Hill Road property.
Yeah, if it helps, his house is up here somewhere.
No, I'm, where's Wilson Hill Road?
Right, right here.
We, all the photos-
So you're on-
We're standing on the road.
You're between Wilson Hill Road and the cell sou- tower type, cell?
Correct, but, but the shot was taken on Wilson Hill Road.
Correct.
But it wasn't taken from the other side of Wilson Hill Road where the abutters are.
Um, not at 153, as that says. Yeah, that's correct. Right on the road itself.
Just to clarify, all of the, uh, other, uh, photo sims that were shown earlier, we, we do them all from the public right away. We didn't go on anyone's private property to-
That's fine. You, you, you can still stand right in front of someone's driveway and take a shot.
Yep.
But that's, okay. What are the other ones from Wilson Hill Road that you have?
From today?
Yes.
There is none. We did it all through, correct.
Is there any other questions? Did you, any other points that you wanted to address before I have, uh, the abutters?
Yes, um, the real estate valuations.
Uh, good evening. My name's Mark Corenti. I am a certified residential appraiser in the state of New Hampshire. I'm with Fair Market Advisors. I trust that you have a thirty-nine-page report.
Mm-hmm.
I'm getting the impression that this is a board that's acting, asking direct questions, so I'd like to afford you concise answers. Might you have any questions for me?
I guess the question would be, I, as I was reading through that, um, how is, how can a cell tower not diminish property values? I mean, the, the view of it, I guess, how does that? What, as an appraiser, how does, what factors into the, to say that, you know, someone walking out the front door and seeing a cell tower, how does that not diminish value?
That's a good question. Um, and to answer you directly, the person who determines value is not the property owner, not the seller. It's your buyer. So the question before this board is, how will granting the application affect property values?
Mm-hmm.
And the person who's going to answer that for you is not your appraiser in front of you, or yourself, or any opinions you might hear this evening. This is the buyers. Buyers are your market makers.
Yep.
You might have an opinion of a property feature, neighborhood feature, you might have spent forty-five thousand dollars to put in that in-ground pool. But if your buyer doesn't feel the same way, the market has spoken, and you have your answer on that.
Fully, fully agree with what you're saying. So, taking that to the next step-
Yep.
Is then, if, uh, someone pays four hundred thousand dollars for a house, and there's a cell phone tower is, is erected, you know, you know, whatever, a hundred, four hundred feet away, and they can see that, um, the person coming in to buy that house isn't gonna want to pay four hundred thousand for it. Maybe, 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 maybe they'll pay four fifty, maybe they'll only want to pay three hundred. But if, if the people, if the general consensus of most people, they don't just want to, they don't want to walk out their front door and look at a cell tower, then you're dealing with buyers who are not gonna, you're doing, you're dealing with a diminished value in the property because the buyers aren't gonna want to pay X for that property, correct?
I see what you're saying. Um, and I'd like to point out the examples to you.
Please.
But I would like to ask you a question.
Can you make sure the great, light's bright green, please?
It is bright green.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
A little bit closer?
Thanks.
You had mentioned buyers. How many people buy a house? Just one.
Yeah, true.
Just one. I'm not going to get into great, great detail on this, but I will, um, give you an idea, the, the steps that I have taken. There are cell towers in Merrimack. There are residential neighborhoods that have views or, and/or are proximate to these cell towers. So, how we determine the value, um, how we measure that value is analyze and study those neighborhoods and see how they have reacted since those cell towers have been put in.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the, um, I used more than one neighborhood because we have more than one price point. Um, the easiest one is Sergeant Acres, which is right on the other side of the hill from where the Merrimack, um, outlets is. There are homes there that are less than a thousand feet from that hundred-and-eighty-foot cell tower. They're selling over asking price in a day, not impacted. If you go a little further out, um, towards, um, Boulevard, um, some of those homes actually have a view of the tower. Again, selling over asking price in less than a week, not impacted.
In, in, and, and the one by, down by the outlets. And, and I, and I see where you're going with that. And you're absolutely right, because I know, I have friends who are real estate agents, I have friends who are trying to buy a house, and, and homes are going off the market within days of going on the market. And, and, but that's the market. Now, eh, the market shift, markets change. So, a- and again, we, we have to talk about the here and the now. So here and now, you're absolutely right. A house in Merrimack is probably gonna go real quick, because most of them do. And a lot of them go over asking. But, you know, we're gonna talk about these, you know, we're talking about houses that are being built and that are gonna be coming in there.
Mm-hmm.
They're really gonna be, someone really gonna shell out six hundred thousand dollars for a home if they gotta look at a cell tower? I mean, I'm just curious. I mean, I'm asking you as your, as, as the appraiser. Uh, I mean, if you're going in and appraising a property, it's got a cell phone tower, you know, uh, two hundred feet behind it, you're gonna say, yeah, this is worth six hundred thousand?
It happens. And the answer is yes. And that buyer has real money, and that answers the question of what value is. As an, I've been in over five thousand homes as an appraiser. I've had the benefit of having the purchase and sale on my hand, interviewing the people, seeing the features. There are features in homes that I have looked at saying, who would ever pay that? But they do. I've got to disassociate myself from, I don't like this neighborhood, I don't like that color, who would ever do that to a kitchen, and understand what the buyers are doing. So, I hear what you're saying. You may not like that cup of tea, but if someone else does and pays full price for it, again, you have your answer.
Understanding the market as it is right now.
Yes.
And I, and I'm very well aware of it. You, as an appraiser, how do you treat a property, never mind what the market is, but how do you treat a property that has a cell phone tower in proximity?
An appraiser won't treat that property. An appraiser will measure the market data.
You won't take that into consideration?
Oh, absolutely. You take it into consideration.
And that's what I'm asking. How, how would you take that into consideration?
You would identify that this is what the specific neighborhood is, whether it's up against, uh, uh, close to a cell tower, or it's rural in character or whatnot. And then you understand what people are paying and why they're paying, and you measure that.
Do you think the cell phone tower proximity will affect the value?
No, I walked that site, uh, two weeks-
Not, not the specific one, but I'm just saying, in general, if you have a property that does not have a cell phone tower in proximity, and you have one in a similar area, similar town, similar everything else on your grid, and it has a cell phone tower, will that affect the value?
I don't want to answer a hypothetical. What I would like to answer is the data that's in the report, because I'm knowledgeable of this data. And this data in this report, these homes are in Merrimack, they do have views of cell towers, they have sold. And one of them was not current in this market. It was from two thousand and thirteen. So it competed in a completely different market. So, some of the examples that you're seeing here, the homes, I had mentioned right off the bat that these homes are selling for over asking price. You are correct. That is today's market, and that's what's happening. But, um, one of the analysis that I gave you was in two thousand and thirteen, where that was a different market, and it sold below list price. And it was on the market for a little bit. However, its peers also sold below list price and on the market for the same amount of time. So, we compare that to the subject property with a view of the cell tower, to its peers that do not have a view of a cell tower, and see if there's a measurable difference. And when there isn't, there's no market difference.
So you found no measurable dis- difference?
No. The data shows none, no.
Okay, okay.
Any other questions? Um, I just have one, I mean, do you have anything else you wanted to add?
Uh, not for what's been asked yet.
One last question for the gentleman from Verizon, if you could just come back up. And then I'm gonna go back to the abutters. I know that there's some questions. I, I'm gonna get back to all of you in a sec.
Just like to restate, uh, I work for Structure Consulting Group on behalf of Verizon.
Okay. I, I understand. I'm sorry for the misquote. How long has this gap that you, we saw on the maps, how long has this been in Merrimack?
Well, I received this project in March of twenty fourteen, so since at least twenty fourteen.
So, since twenty fourteen, you've been looking at this site? Or, my, my question is, why all of a sudden is this there? Why, why, why now? Why, why wasn't this done in twenty fourteen? Why, why now?
So, after, um, reviewing the area and, um, coming to some sort of an agreement with the landlord, the site was put on hold by Verizon Wireless. It was deemed, you know, it wasn't a high priority at the moment. And now it has become a high pri- priority. Uh, I presume partially because of, uh, the Turkey Hill Road, Merrimack Seven, they see that it's taking a lot of usage, and it needs an offload from that. So, to take away the, you know, the overburdening of Merrimack Seven, Turkey Hill Road, eh, another site is needed to the west of it.
So, when did, when did Verizon put a hold on this area? Do you know?
It was originally put on hold, um, I'd say October of twenty fourteen.
And then they, so they've waited four years, over four years to make that, to make the move, because they had to save money?
I don't-
Yeah. I mean, so, so, okay, so, eh, that, that being said, eh, eh, can, could Verizon, eh, could they, like Merrimack Seven and the other towers, can those towers, um, be, can they be, can the range on those be increased? At all, or they, they can't be, they can't be upgraded, enhanced in any way, shape, or form to increase their signal strength?
To my knowledge, no. Eh, at this current time, eh, you know, all the new Merrimack Seven, I know, uh, Merrimack Eight at the Home Depot, they all have the most current 4G LTE antenna doing, you know, the best that they can, or, and they're maxing out, and that's why this, another site is required.
Okay. All right. Then this site use, is optimal because it's up on a hill?
That, that's part of it.
However, however, conceivably, you could put two more towers that are not on hills and still cover the same area.
You wouldn't cover the hill, the top of the hill.
Wouldn't cover the top of the, well, the top of the hill already seems to have coverage, but I, I get what you're saying. Okay. All right, thank you very much. Um, I don't, I know that some of the abutters had, uh, comments. If you'd like to come back up, you're more than welcome. If you have comments, questions?
Thank you. Michael Martin again, 144 Wilson Hill Road, and I'll say thank you for answering some of the questions. But it seems like the, the overriding issue of what the government says you can't get in the way of cell, you know, cell phone development is that there has to be, uh, safety, convenience, and general welfare. We also see overall development and things like that, and I believe, uh, council added health, safety, and welfare. When you look at all of that, if I've got coverage, and the neighbors have coverage, and people on your committee have coverage going through that road every day, we don't see a gap. Uh, the map that they showed, you know, someone said it would be twenty-five hundred new customers on that tower. Well, on that tower, but you're also shedding people into the other towers, so there's a net trade-off of a much smaller number, I'm sure, than twenty-five hundred. And looking at that map and living there for ten years, I happen to know that there aren't many people living in that area that now suddenly has coverage. A lot of it is swampland, a lot of it is conservation land. There's the Amherst Conservation District. There's the Merrimack and Amherst Conservation District and that. There's the Greater Road Conservation District is part of that. So, there will be no building, there will be no people, and we do get cell phone coverage. I hike up in those areas quite frequently. So, you know, I, I wonder if we're looking at these criteria for the first thing, that it substantially meets federal and local criteria for applying in a residential zone, why is it that we're only getting one out of the four or five things that they're saying? So, to me, it doesn't meet the test, and we keep talking about 4G LTE. That is the data component. So, you know, eh, everyone should also know that Xfinity has Wi-Fi that entire road. So Verizon allows you to go in and toggle to say, get a cell phone signal over Wi-Fi. So if you're riding up along that road and you are an Xfinity customer, you will still have cell phone coverage, which I believe a lot of the neighbors are, because it's the only one that offers coverage out there.
Of course.
So, you know, and, and, and lastly, while it's, you know, it would seem like it's great for Merrimack development, most of the map in that coverage that was shown was Amherst. You've got three towers in Amherst that look like seventy-seven feet, fifty feet. Can't they just be increased in height if they're allowed to have an increase?
That's a good point.
Could that work and help get that coverage gap? Because, again, those of us that are residents here have already said that we don't have a gap.
That's a good point.
So, those are my main points on that.
Thank you.
Uh, I'm, I'm sorry, for the record, I'm at 144 Wilson Hill. There were no pictures taken, so I was that big, wide-open field between the first set of pictures and the second set of pictures. And when I walk out my front door and look across, I see Brett Vaughn's, Brett Vaughn's, uh, front porch light as soon as the foliage is down. And to your point, everyone knows that all those oak trees that are up there, they get foliage late, in mid to late May, and they lose it late. But there is about six months where they have no foliage at all, and it's mostly oaks in that area.
So you could see the balloon?
I would imagine, I would love to have somebody come, and I will graciously allow you to stand on my front porch and take your picture.
Okay.
And if there is none, you know, then it would change my mind a little bit.
Okay. Gentlemen in the back? Any other quick, oh, sure, come on up, come on up.
Got an opportunity, take it.
I'll keep you here all night, sorry. So I, just a couple of quick comments. I, one of my questions was the average real estate value on the comps.
Name again?
Sean Lynch. I'm almost directly across the street. I'm 120 Wilson Hill Road. I can see up Brett's driveway. He also owns, Brett Vaughn owns the property directly to the left of my property, which is, is directly across the street from the, the road that you're seeing going up there. And there certainly could have been pictures taken from, from that property, because Brett owns it. I wrote some notes, bear with me. But, um, so, one of the things, so, my, my wife and I will likely, you do talk about it's up to the buyer to perceive worth.
That was mentioned, yes.
We'll likely be the first to put our house on the market, a house that's six months old and is our dream house that we built. Again, eh, one, out of fear of, over time, people becoming more worried about that and that destroying our investment in the property. And two, again, my own personal opinion, not arguing health effects, but I'm not comfortable raising a family that close to a cell tower. So, we, we would likely, as difficult as it is, so new to the property, probably list our house. I, I would be curious, too, what the timeline is for construction of that. God forbid it goes through. I hope it doesn't. Um, so we can try to get ahead of that.
If it goes through, they'll have thirty days, uh, to have, uh, somebody appeal, and before they can, uh, begin construction. And, what? And then it has to go to the planning board as well. So, this, if, if it's approved this evening, this wouldn't be the last stop. It's, planning board would be after this.
Okay.
And you'd be notified about that as well, if, if it does proceed.
Okay. And my last piece, I, I was curious to know if there was any penalty? Twenty-five-year lease? Was that for the?
Eh, I, that I don't know.
Yeah, a question for them, primarily, and I was hoping Brett was here, because we spoke two weeks ago, and, um, he was very much not interested in moving forward with this anymore when he found out that we were overly concerned. He was doing some research on, on health effects, uh, as well, and was concerned, him and his wife, and, um, I think, I'm sorry.
So back up for a second. So Brett, the landowner.
The landowner.
Has voiced concerns to you.
To me.
That he doesn't want to move forward with this.
His words were that he was felt-
No, 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 I, I'm, I'm talking, I'm-
I'm curious, but-
Yeah, it's just out of curiosity.
I'm just, eh, eh, just, you're talking to everyone.
We had a conversation, because we know Brett, he was our Realtor, and we voiced concerns that we didn't want to live there if that was the case. And, um, he said he didn't realize that that neighborhood would be upset. He didn't realize there was any health effects. He was doing some re- He was doing some research and starting to uncover some stuff. But, um, he felt like he was jammed into a contract and was sort of stuck and didn't know what to do.
Really?
So we had, we had talked. I said, well, can you try to get out of that contract? He said, I don't know.
That's nothing we can.
Okay.
Again, so my curiosity is for, for me to have a conversation with Brett and let him know what the penalties are, just to make sure he's aware if it's easy to get out of. So I was just, it was a question more for the team over here than for you.
And I appreciate that.
But that, that was all I had to add, if there was any questions.
No.
Thank you.
Please.
Thank you again. Just two quick follow-up points. Um, that was all hearsay. So, um, I will tell you that.
We understand.
We understand.
I will, I will tell you that we've met with Brett and he's behind us still. He's not pulled the plug. If he pulled the plug, we wouldn't be here with all these people. Um, secondly, um, we put, um, our expert for RF coverage gaps and needs on, and you asked questions. And some of the, um, um, opponents still don't believe that. Um, we would be fully agreeable for you to hire your own independent RF consultant and pay for it.
I don't think it's a matter of the RF consultant. I think it's a matter of just seeing a tower.
No, no, I meant, I meant they're questioning the need, the gap. Uh, I have a signal, I don't. A, a, a lot of the things now, it's no longer, can you hear me now? It's data. Everybody has many, many devices and they're streaming everything. I drive with five or six apps on. I'm always streaming. I'm not using it while I'm, I'm not doing it while I'm driving. I have, you know, you have your navigation apps on, you have your email app on. So if the board is concerned that, you know, is there really a gap? We'd gladly pay for a consultant because we're confident that there's a gap. And under the FCC, um, um, rules and regs, that if there's a gap, then you, you have to allow it to fix the gap, um, under the 1996 Telecommunications Act. Sorry, drew a blank.
I know, I know that.
And I have nothing further unless the board does.
So you, you're offering to withdraw this for the moment until you can get this done?
No, um, we will, um, we will take a continuance if the board wants to hire its own independent radio frequency engineer, not withdraw, continue to, uh, to the next stage.
And you're willing to pay for it?
Abs- absolutely. If you have any reservations about the gap, what Mr. Valente said, um, um, we will do that. Just so you're comfortable.
Okay. Thank you. Any other final public opinion, comments, questions? Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing. Discussion items on the board. I guess my first question is, Kelly, is what he's proposing something that is doable? Is that something in the privy of the zoning board? Is that something that's privy of planning?
As far as the consultant?
Yes.
That's your decision if you want to continue this, cause you want additional.
Turn on your mic.
You want to continue because you want additional information. That's the board's decision of what you want to do.
Okay. Discussion from the board? Turn on your mic. Speak it up.
I, I don't think it's necessary to have yet another survey done.
Okay.
If you want to, go right ahead.
I'm not sure another survey is gonna provide much more information.
True.
I agree with, I agree with Rod and Kathleen.
Lynn?
I, I can't dispute it, so.
Can't dispute what?
The need.
Okay. I, I can't dispute the need. I can dispute one point. And, and I heard, um, I heard the conversation. And you're absolutely right. There is only one buyer. I, and I, I get that. But it only, just face it, it only takes one buyer to buy a house. I think that people walking out, and I understand that the appraisals have been done. I understand this towers, this isn't the first tower to come up. But I think that, uh, it could affect, uh, real estate values in, in the neighborhood, in the neighbor, in the neighborhood. Both the houses that are there, as well as the houses that, uh, are to be built. And by the sound of it, they're gonna have pretty hefty price tags on them. So I don't know. If I was gonna be dropping over half a million dollars on a home, I don't think I'd want to be looking at a cell tower on my back porch. That's my personal opinion on that. Um, as far as the coverage, I mean, everybody had seen the, the, we heard from three residents and I've been on Hilton, Wilson Hill Road, it's not a lot of people up that way. Um, certainly understand why people would buy up there, cause it is a lot of open land and is relatively quiet. I, I don't have, I didn't have problems when I drove up there myself. Um, no offense, I, I use Sprint, but, um, I, I didn't have any problems. Um, I, people that do have Verizon up there don't seem to have problems either. Um, so, and I, and I saw the maps and, and, and I understand the science. I understand the technology. I, I really do, having, having worked in the techno, working in technology myself. I, I get it. I know why it's there. I know why there's coverage. And I know that they would, putting your towers up there could, could reduce the burden of other towers. However, I don't know. I, I, I don't, I don't know if this is maybe the best site for it, um, or if this is the best result of it. Um, it's just based on the population density of that particular area. Um, so, uh, I, I'd have to say that I, I'm not, I'm, I'm not a big proponent of it based upon, um, mainly based upon being, um, the, the adversary effect of property values. And I, and I did read all of the proposal. I read the, believing we got the entire packet here, read through all of it, um, multiple times, uh, because I know that this, uh, is gonna, is gonna weigh on some people and certainly potentially weigh on their future. They're gonna be leaving Merrimack and we hate to see that happen. So, um, that's where I stand on it. So unless there's any other further discussion items from the board, I would like a motion or discussion item.
I, I think it's a great site for cell tower. It's a fabulous site for it. I just don't see the need.
I have AT&amp;T and I can't make a call.
I, I don't have Verizon, I don't have Sprint. I have AT&amp;T and I can't make a call in Merrimack.
I've had Verizon for years. I mean, I go back to the, the bag phone days. And I don't have a problem or have not had a problem with coverage. And like I said, I, I think it's a great site for cell tone, cellphone tower, but I don't see the need for it, at least right now. Now, maybe in five years, but I don't see the need for it right now.
Looking at some of the reports, the coverage that, I, I know, you know, some people maybe don't have any trouble with that coverage. Maybe there are some people that do. Um, but I'm looking at reports and listening to experts that it's saying that there's a problem out there. I personally have experienced it. I'm not gonna refute that expert because that's not my area of expertise. So that's why I'm gonna accept the report that there is a need. So that's my feeling.
Any final comments, Rod? Drew? Do I have a motion? Someone's gonna make one.
I'll move, we approve it, because that's where we start.
All right. So read it in.
I move, we approve the special exception under section 2.0, 2.1, sub B 2 of the zoning ordinance to allow the installation of a telecommunications tower within the residential district. The parcel is located at 123 Wilson Hill Road in the R1 Residential District by zoning map. Tax map 4A, lot 23, case 2018 hyphen 41.
Do I have a second?
Subject to the conditions in the staff memo.
Subject, okay. And do I have a second? So seconded by Kathleen. All in favor of approving the motion, say aye. All opposed? Aye. Again, abstained. So three, zero. Read it in the, read the other one.
Two, three.
Two, four, three against.
A motion to deny the special exception under section 2.0, 2.1B 2 of the zoning ordinance to allow the installation of a telecommunications tower within the residential district. The parcel is located at 123 Wilson Hill Road in the R1 Residential District by the zoning map. Tax map 4A, lot 23, case 2018 hyphen 41.
Citing staff's recommendations.
Citing staff's recommendation.
Do I have a second? Drew's seconded by Drew. All in favor of denial of the petition, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Three, three.
Three, two.
Three, two. And citing it on what, uh, what criteria?
I need to get out to the criteria. The specific site is an appropriate location for such a use or uses is determined of overall community development and lack thereof. Yep.
All right. The second one for me would be, uh, diminished value. But I don't think we need the second one.
I, and I don't think we can prove that.
It's whatever your reasoning is for the motion, so.
The first, the first part.
It's on one.
Okay.
I don't, I don't think we proved the.
So with that being said, I imagine we're not be moving forward with the next petition for the camouflage, um, at this point. Gentlemen, thank you very much for your time. Um, I'm gonna take a five-minute recess, let everybody move out. Lorraine, I appreciate your patience. You'll be next.
Road in the R1 Residential District by zoning map, tax map 4A, lot 23. Now.
Motion to approve.
Is this, do we need an emotion to approve this? Since we don't have the other one?
You need to act on it. So either they withdraw or you.
Okay. Then, then I, okay. So we'll.
So it's a motion, so you're motion to approve the second one, which is the zoning ordinance to allow the proposed communication tower in a residential district to be camouflaged. You second the motion to approve the camouflage. Okay. So, so, so motion made by Lynn, seconded by Kathleen. All in favor of the zoning ordinance to allow a proposed telecommunications tower not to be camouflaged, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So that's four against, one, four.
So one, 140.
140. So we need for denial of this.
Deny the variance under section 2.0, 2.1B 2C of the zoning ordinance to allow a proposed telecommunications tower in the residential district to not be camouflaged. The parcel is located at 123 Wilson Hill Road in the R1 Residential District by zoning map. Tax map 4A, lot 23, case 2018 hyphen 43.
Do I have a second? Seconded by Rod. All in favor of denying, say aye. Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Four, one. And cite your reasoning for the denial. You do have, you have decided reason.
Because the first one was denied, we don't have the, the ability to allow it.
All right.
Okay, Kelly? Okay.
The board, you've got a quick three-minute break. All right. We're going, thank you for allowing the recess. It was a little bit of a long-winded case there. So, uh, let's start with the next, which is, Lorraine, a LaRusso applicant owner variance under section 2.0, 2.76 of the zoning ordinance to permit the construction of a single-family dwelling 23 feet from a wetland where 40 feet is required. The parcel is located at 12 Kerry Drive in the R Residential, Anacra for Conservation District's tax map 5B, lot 176, 2000, uh, case number 2018 dash 30 rehearing. Now, there are three petitions in front of us. We are gonna hear and meet one at a time and vote on them separately. Um, uh, we, this is a rehearing, so the five criteria, we're just, I'm just gonna, you know, as read, as stated, unless that's changed. Um, but I think. Um, but I think due to rehearing is new evidence or has come to light or new information. So if you'd like to present that.
So we, we can take the evidence as presented originally and just add any new evidence?
Okay. Um, excuse me. Okay, my mic's on. Good evening. My name is Laura Dodge. I'm an attorney with McLean Middleton. I'm here tonight on behalf of Lorraine LaRusso, the applicant and property owner. I'm here this evening with Thomas Carr, sits to my right. He's with Meridian Land Services. He is a certified wetland scientist. He prepared the plan, which is essentially the new evidence that you did not have before you in September when we were here before the board meeting. Chairman Dwyer, in response to your question about addressing the variance criteria for each, we've got two variance applications, one for the setback from the wetlands and one for the setback from the, for the septic system.
Then a special exception.
And then special exception. So.
My mistake.
I'm, the way I presented my materials was the letter in support of the application. I addressed the wetland setback and the septic setback variance criteria together because you, the part of the plan is, includes the home with the septic. So for purposes of not being redundant and taking too much of the board's time, and I respect that it's already been a late evening for you, I will address those and then I'm happy to answer any questions in terms, after each criteria.
Okay.
But just so I'm clear, do you want me to then go, do you want me to go through the five variance criteria for?
The five variance criteria, Kelly, my understanding is it's already been read into record.
Okay.
It's already, it's already part of it. I think what we're, is we're coming back, we approved the rehearing, through the appeal process, we approved the rehearing to hear new, as new information has come to light that wasn't available.
Right.
So, um, the board is up to speed on the previous hearing.
Right.
So looking at the new information that has come to light regarding that.
Okay. And, and from what I understood and participating in the prior hearing, the, the biggest concern was the drainage issue.
Yes.
I mean, we acknowledged that here before. We know that the abutters have concerns of that. You know, the area is wet. There's certainly no denying that. But the plan that we have before you, and I'm gonna defer to Mr. Carr to address some of those concerns. We feel it's a storm water management measures and some implementations that we've incorporated into this plan that will address those drainage issues that the abutters are concerned about and that will help show and support why we feel that the house and the septic can be located on the lot in the particular spot that we've indicated on the plan.
Okay.
So.
All right.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I am Tom Carr from Meridian Land Services. I'm a certified wetland scientist. I'm head of the environmental department there. We do quite a lot of permits in New Hampshire. More specifically related to this, we do a lot of Shoreland Water Quality Protection Act permits, and these are permits for properties within 200 feet of a great pond, which is 10 acres or more, or a fourth order river stream that the state protects. Within those permits, we have to do a design similar to what we submitted and a report accordingly that applies to that, that plan. When we're doing a shoreline permit, if we, if we are proposing an impervious area for a lot that's over 20%, we're required to do storm water management. When we're over 30%, we're required to do storm water management that's addressed and stamped by a professional engineer. This particular lot is 20,908 square feet. The proposed house and driveway is 1,260 square feet, which if we were going to consider all of that impervious would be 6% of the lot area. So under the, uh, under the state's regulation for a protected pond or a protected river, we would be required to do nothing with storm water. What we've incorporated into this plan that we have before you in the report that I submitted are methods that we use in the shoreline permitting process to infiltrate water so that it's, so that we're not shedding water from a roof or a driveway and creating runoff toward the resource. In this case, we're dealing with the wetlands. We all know that Kerry Drive, it's an old subdivision that predated this. There are, it's densely populated. There are lawns in that area that go up to the edge of wetland. There are lawns in those areas that are actually jurisdictional wetland and are maintained. What we've proposed here is, is a method to infiltrate 100% of the storm water on this lot, so there, it will not generate any runoff at all. The driveway, we have proposed a porous paver surface, and this is a approved method of infiltration to create a driveway that infiltrates the water rather than sheds it. And what these, what these driveways are made of, and there's a detail on the plan, specifically there are porous paver blocks that are put on the surface over a series of layers of crushed stone. And those blocks fit together tightly with a wedge system that holds them apart so that there's a gap between them. So they're, they're designed to fit together as a puzzle, but with spikes or triangles that hold them apart, you can put the gravel in between it, so when the water falls, it goes between the gaps and into the ground. So that's what we have proposed for the driveway and the walkway. With the roof, we have a 24 by 25 house, and on the drip edges of that house, we show a roof line, a ridge line that goes east-west on the, on the house. On each side of the north and south side, we have a two-by-two infiltration trench, so that when the water comes off the roof, it doesn't hit the grass and the lawn and start running toward the wetland. It goes directly into the ground. The soils in this area are deerfield loamy sand. It's a moderately well-drained sand. And when I say the area, I'm talking about the area of the house driveway. That's not the wetland. The wetland would be a different soil classification, but the area we're developing is a moderately well-drained sandy soil, so it has rapid infiltration, rapid permeability. So we are effectively taking a lot that currently has 100% infiltration, developing it and retaining 100% infiltration on the lot. So the biggest concern I read in the minutes were runoff, storm drainage, we have all these problems. We're not changing that. This proposal that what we have here now will infiltrate 100% of the water. This house is also gonna be built on a slab, so there's gonna be no footing drain, or sump pump, I should say, that's pumping water out of the ground, out of the basement and discharging it onto the surface because there will be no need for that. So again, I know most of these houses in this area do have sump pumps. Uh, I've seen it. We've done a lot of work in these areas. We do a ton of septic system designs at Meridian, and it's not uncommon for a lot of these houses to have sump pumps that pump the water out of, to keep the basement dry. This won't need it.
Any of the proposed changes that you're looking to make to this land, cause you are putting a house there, I mean, you're still putting a slab in it, you know, the concrete slab. I guess, uh, and, and I, I don't know for sure. I mean, I obviously the concrete isn't gonna, I mean, is that gonna deteriorate over time? Is, are you gonna have from the water? I mean, it's, it's gonna be drenched by the sound of it most of its, you know, natural life. I mean, so is it gonna deteriorate? Is it gonna cause anything like a shifting of the, of the house or the land or anything to that nature?
There, it'll be no different than a house with a foundation, a full foundation. Typically, um, floating slabs can be constructed where there's no footing on it, where it's strictly a, a flat pad with an arched bottom. Those are not very common in New Hampshire. Most people will pour a four-foot frost wall and then the slab on top of it to ensure that there is no potential settling. Um, that foundation would be no different than a full foundation with a basement. It's concrete, same lifespan. Typically, concrete hardens over time, and, uh, you know, we are not living in a salt-rich environment like the seashore areas where we have particularly down south, a lot of rotting of concrete due to salt. Um, so it, this would be no different than any other house in the neighborhood.
Now, any of the proposed changes that you're looking to make to this lot, as far as the drainage, as far as putting that in here, could that, could, you said that you're retaining the water that is, are, they're retaining the moisture of the water that is already on this lot. And so you, your, your expert opinion is that you're not gonna be creating, uh, you know, you're not gonna be creating an increased runoff to the, to the neighbors. My, I guess my question is, are any of the changes you're making, could they conceivably improve the drainage that the other, that other neighbors are complaining of?
I, I can't say that this would improve a naturally vegetated area. I couldn't possibly say that. We, when you lose vegetation, what you lose is evapotranspiration. The trees drink the water and, and there is a factor there, but that's, you know, Ms. LaRusso could, could cut the lot for timber, and that would destroy all of that anyway.
Right. Or anybody who didn't own the lot for that matter could cut that lot for timber.
Anybody could do that on Kerry Drive or that area. You know, I, I look at this as, and I put this in the report, that this is actually a model scenario to, for the town to have a house that has this kind of, of drainage system incorporated into the construction. You know, this, this is a model, uh, a model, you know, it's, it's a difficult lot. It's, it, it preexists all these and it has, uh, it has issues based on its age and, and the surrounding, but the proposal itself presents a model home, shall we say, and, and characteristics of a drainage system that should be used more often.
You talk a.
I'd like to add to some of the things that we had submitted to behind tab number six with our application. She was considering different landscaping techniques, rain gardens, some of these water-absorbing plants that would help presumably absorb some of that water that's there.
So conceivably, if you went with like, say, the vegetated swale, now, it's pretty interesting reading, by the way, the vegetated swale, or you went with the vegetated buffer, in putting in the right type of plants, you may actually could solve some of your na, maybe potentially, there's always that potential, who knows, we're, we're talking about future, could potentially solve some of your neighbors' issues as far as the rainwater that they talk about that comes off that property. I mean, by the sound of it, from what I was reading about these, the, 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 the designs, and I, again, it's up to Ms. LaRusso whether or not, I guess she wants to implement them, but.
Right, and keep in mind, I mean, she wants to live here. This is her house. She wants to live harmoniously with her neighbors. We're not, you know, we're trying to improve an existing situation to make everyone happy.
Yeah.
She will be living there and for, it benefits her and everyone else to the extent that they can to manage and mitigate some of these water issues.
Okay. Is there any questions from the board? Is there any other information that you wanted to present that we didn't have, we weren't privy to the last time?
No, it, you have the plan, the revised plan. You have Mr. Carr's report, which goes into sort of an analysis of the pa, plan and what we're looking to do. And that addresses the issue with the septic location and the distance from the wetlands. I mean, I think we all agree from the last time, it, this is a unique lot. It's, the special conditions are such that it does create the necessary hardship because without a variance, we can't act in strict conformance with.
Right.
The ordinance. So it's absolutely necessary for anyone, for Ms. LaRusso or anyone, to build on this lot to get a variance. You know, our concerns we discussed the last time is that it's a vacant lot. You know, the vandalism and the trespassing, it's still continuing. Um, I don't think, you know, that's in anyone's best interest, including the abutters. So.
Okay. Thank you very much. Uh, I'll open up the, you wanna take a step aside for a second? So open up the public hearing. Is there anybody that'd like to speak in favor of this petition? Yeah, gotta listen. I know it's getting late. It's been a late, long day for all of us. Anybody that would like to speak against this petition? Are you sworn in, sir?
I am not.
Just raise your right hand. Sir, tell the truth, the whole truth, and not the truth, so help you God.
I am.
Have a seat, sign in, state your name, please.
All members of the board.
Actually, why don't you, why don't you sign in first and then?
You got it, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, members of the board. Thanks for hearing my words.
Sure. You're, you said your name and your address.
Keith Driscoll. I live on 15 Maidstone Drive.
Okay.
Which is directly abutting the property on the corner of Kerry and Maidstone.
Okay.
My main concern as the property owner that is abutting this property is where the septic system will be built. As shown on the plans provided online, the septic system will be built on top of my existing septic, which I am very, very concerned about.
They couldn't do that. They can't do that.
Well, that's what, that's what, that's what the plan showed.
Okay.
So how is that going to work? Well, do I have to move my septic when somebody comes up digging on my septic?
Uh, you, you don't understand. They can't do that. That's illegal. So, and I understand, and I'll address it. I'll address in the plans. I'll address in the plans. But just so you know, you can't do that.
Okay, okay. That makes me feel a little better.
So it, we'll take, that's one. We'll, we'll, we'll get that addressed. Other questions, concerns?
And I do also want to just address the whole, what, what'd you say, trespassing or, or what was the other term used with the trespassing?
Trespassing, vandalism.
Vandalism, yeah. I, I've been there. I moved in May of 2017. So I haven't been there too, too long, but in that time, I have not seen any trespassing or vandalism. So it looks like that's been cleared up since the last instance.
Okay. Cool. Right? Thank you.
And yeah, that's all. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll get, we'll, well, I'll address that in a second, if you wanna. Just let them step back up. Um, if you could step, actually, you know, I'm gonna go through all the abutters and we'll, we'll come back to that. Is there anybody else that would like to speak against this petition? Come on up, sign in, please. State your name.
Hi, good evening. My name, is it working?
Uh, it should be, yeah.
My name is Edward Shalovsky. I live at 11 Maidstone Drive. I lived there 30 years and trespassing and vandalism, I'm sorry, I've never seen anybody back there. The place is loaded with ticks and.
Yeah.
Mosquitoes. I, anybody goes back there, good luck to them. I've been there 30 years and the water, it's not wetlands. I mean, it's puddled, six inches deep of water back there. I can't understand why the property is even buildable. I don't know if I understand the gentleman here, he's an expert at the wetlands.
Yeah, directed, see this way.
As an expert, I'm just trying to show a little respect, uh, that he's a wetlands expert, but he's talking about drainage from rain and natural events. You have a leaching field out there, 1,000 gallons a month, 2,000 gallons of water a month being pumped additional into the wetland area. How's that raise all that water around there? The question hasn't been answered.
Where is that being pumped? Where's, you're saying water's being pumped in there?
Yeah, you flush your toilet. It goes to your tanks. It goes out to your leach field. It leaches into the ground. The ground goes into the wetlands or just surrounding areas. It's gotta be dispersed. It's not gonna just gonna stay in one place. It's gonna disperse, and water takes whatever the least resistance path there is. So if it's, if there's wetlands there, it's gonna run into the wetlands, a percentage of it will be, or some percentage of it. So I don't understand how you can say that there's no water affecting the area. I would be more happier if he took and paid to have sewage brought out there and ran everything to sewage to take all the water and waste from the house out of the area.
Oh, I agree with you.
Okay, so.
You should be, that's the town council. You wanna go talk to them.
Fully understand that.
Start going to town council meetings, start bringing that up.
I would love to see you go down Maidstone Drive, but whenever that happens, it happens. I've been here 30 years and they've been talking about doing it for 30 years and it hasn't happened. Uh, so I'm just concerned about all the additional water from just waste that comes out of the house. Mosquitoes, ticks, uh, the water levels are gonna change. I mean, I've been back there several times. Somebody mentioned that it won't affect the trees. I've been back there several times and pine trees are dying because the water levels are rising back there. So I don't see them going away.
Okay.
Several times, I've wanted to get back there with a chainsaw and knock down the trees before widowmakers take out people that do try to trespass there. So my concern.
So you've, you've been in the area, you said, for what, 30 years?
Yep.
So conceivably, you know, is, is, based upon some of the landscape techniques and, and that they talk about as far as helping with the drainage and being able to put a slab, not a, not a basement. I assume you probably have a basement.
I have a basement, yes. I have a sump pump as well.
Yeah.
Trying to get the water out.
So to have a, have a slab, yeah. So to have a slab and then to be able to put in some of the landscaping designs over the last couple of years to deal with drainage is, is places like that. Do you, you think that there, it's conceivable that some of the, the techniques that are out there, if employed, could potentially either improve the drainage or at least not make it any worse than it already is?
With all due respect, I'm not an expert at plants.
Sure.
But I tell you what, water is water.
Right.
It, I just see water out back there. Every spring, my, part of my backyard is flooded and then it slowly drains off during the summertime. And then several years ago, we had bad rain. Um, my whole, all the way up in my backyard was flooded. Um, when I had my leaching fields replaced, I couldn't put my leaching field over in that area. Um, and they, because of. fields replaced, I couldn't put my leaching field over in that area and they, because of town ordinance is because of pumping water into the wetlands. So I had to do a pump-up system in my backyard, which was, you know, expensive. And my backyard has a giant mound in it now. So I don't know how you can get rid of water, but to me, you either put a pump in and pump out the wetlands, provide some sort of flotation pump to clear it. I'm just concerned that that's going to impact my backyard and I'm going to sit there and say, oh geez, well now I don't have a backyard anymore. Now I've got a swamp in my backyard.
Right, and I guess a lot of what they're saying and the reason that we offered to or have agreed to rehear this was that based upon the information that's been provided, that they're talking about the saturation staying and not necessarily overflowing into the abutters. So.
Water is water. It's going to go. I'm an electrical engineer by trade.
Right.
And I know grounding and everything else and electrons go where they go.
Yeah.
And people can get killed if you don't control those paths very closely.
Right.
So it's the same thing. How can you guarantee the water coming off the roof flows that direction?
Right.
You know, are you raising the whole property up eight feet so it's all angled off? Or are you taking and just leaving the property flat and building a slab right there and hopefully the natural contours of the land allow some of the water to flow there? How much percentage of it are you allowing to flow away? So that's my concerns.
Those are good points. Okay, thank you. So anybody else that'd like to speak against Good evening. I'm Aiden Seltzer-Wilms. This is my wife Julie Seltzer-Wilms. We're at 8 Cary Drive, also property owners of 10 Cary Drive, which abuts 12. To the extent possible, a lot of our comments have been made in at least two hearings previously. So in the efforts of not necessarily repeating all of our concerns, to address the new topics brought up, I appreciate the description of the water mitigation efforts. And that is the critical thing, is the, you know, how the drainage will happen. I'm not opposed to necessarily a house being there or having a new neighbor or anything like that. It's simply the water issue. My primary concern is whatever efforts are put into place, what assurances does, do we or the other residents in the neighborhood have that they will be effective? And how can that, you know, how can that be put into place? Because while we have an assurance that an individual wants to build a house and they will reside there, that's great. They can change their mind five minutes later and that's absolutely their right. How is that property protected or how is it assured that that property is not a detriment to the neighborhood for eternity?
Let me answer your question.
Sure.
Merrimack allows for, I believe, home business to be a, I believe, machine shop, I think is one of the acceptable businesses. And bear with me for a second. How, what assurances do the people that live around you that you don't decide to open up a garage and fix cars or something to that extent? My point is, they're really, short of you having purchased the land, there is no assurances as far as what a homeowner can do, what a homeowner can and will do with their property. You can, you are very welcome to, with your property to do as you, as you see fit, as long as it's, you know, within, you know, town ordinances and variances and so on and so forth. So there is no assurances, other than the fact that Ms. LaRusso has, obviously, she's been here and has come back again, very much wants to be in that community and has taken some pretty extraneous steps as far as hiring folks to come in, to come up with ideas so that they, she can put a home in there. So it certainly shows the motivation to want to be able to be part of that community and to put in a house that is not going to be a detriment to the people around there. So, but I do not have an assurance that the water situation will approve. I think it was pointed out, short of the town putting in septic and to alleviate some of it, you know, there's, I don't know what else. And so there really is no, unfortunately, there's no like hard written assurance that can be given to you.
Okay.
Just like your neighbors don't have any hard written assurance that you're going to not do something to your property that they may see detrimental to theirs.
Okay.
If you understand what I'm saying.
With all due respect, sir, what, you know, while she has demonstrated, you know, this good faith effort to put the work in to design a solution, there's nothing stating that she could not, the intention could not actually be to build a property and sell it instantly.
Could. She could clear cut the land as well.
Right, absolutely.
Do what she wants.
Absolutely, absolutely. So I don't, I don't necessarily feel that it's appropriate to put those kinds of intentions as fact. But that being said, yeah, sure. So that being, with your guidance, then I could elevate my land five feet in my backyard and shove everything out to everyone else. And there would be no recourse.
That's correct.
You're correct.
Except you'd have to deal with your neighbors.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I mean, and that, again, that's your land. I, to get back to your point though, I, not to go tiffy-taffy on this, you know, we've been here all very long. I don't think that she would go through all of this just to flip a house. That's a lot of work to flip a house. But I understand what you're saying.
Cheap piece of land.
But if you want to, if you want to raise your property by five feet, you actually, yes, you have that, you have that right to be able to do that. Okay. I'm not sure if it, if it's at all permissible or not, but I do have some photographs of the property in question. I'm not sure that it, it's at all admissible or anything like that, but as well as ours, our one, approximately one acre backyard at this moment is approximately half covered in three to four inches of water, right now, as we stand. November was rough. So since the last meeting, things have been very different on that property. It is both ours at 8 Cary, 10 Cary, and 12 Cary are substantially underwater. We look at the photographs and I don't think any reasonable human being could say, wow, that looks possible. I don't see it. But I am, let's put it this way, I am all for someone taking full advantage of their right to build on a residential property, but I cannot see how the town could authorize someone to do something, full knowing that there is a substantial risk to the surrounding properties without some measure of guaranteed mitigation of that.
I understand, and I understand fully what you're saying. I really do. And I guess the only, I fully understand what you're saying. And I guess I'm just a little confused because you kind of started the conversation by saying that you did not have an issue with somebody building a house there. Did not have an issue with someone building a house there. So.
In terms of, I have, I have no, I have no complaints with the fact that somebody wants to build something. But I do have an issue with the fact that I don't have any assurance of what the impact will be to our property.
Right, and in.
In terms of physical damage.
And I, that's, and so what we're hearing from them is that they are going to contain the moisture based upon what they're looking to do. Now, could that improve your situation? Maybe. Could it worsen your situation? That is a possibility as well. Could you raise your backyard five feet if you wanted to and push it off to your neighbors? You can most certainly do that. Could she go in and, I mean, we could, I mean, honestly, you could go all through with variables. She could clear cut the entire land and it could become a very bad situation for everybody in that neighborhood and flood it out. It's her property. But I think that she, by the sound of it, is looking to make a conscious effort to actually even, to potentially improve what is been described by a lot of people as a mess. And you're absolutely right. Could it, could it impact you? Yes, it very well could. Are there any assurances from this board of the town that it'll be any better? No, there's not. But just like we couldn't get, just like we couldn't give a neighbor of yours any assurances that you're not going to do something to your property that could be detrimental to them. It just, we, you know, we were going on the information that we have in front of us and, but I do understand your concerns, definitely, and they're valid.
In regards to the environmentalist they brought, I would, I believe I brought this up at the first one a year ago. He still does work for, and is hired by either the law firm or for the individual.
Sure.
So I would trust more an environmental assessment done by the state or the town, somebody who doesn't have a dog in the fight. An environmental assessment is usually, we work for the federal government.
Right.
So usually when we do EAs, it's a full-blown EA with a full-blown mitigation detailed report. And I understand this is much different than that. I understand now that you actually made me feel 100% worse by telling me we have zero recourse to when she builds and we start flooding. I believe their environmental expert also said that he could, he could not say that it would improve our situation. It would help whoever's building the house, who then sells and the next person doesn't like that shrubbage and rips it all out. I get that, we have no assurance, but I'm talking, I'm trying, I'm here to protect my property value as well as my neighbors are. I'm actually quite offended by the vandalism and we have our own little network on 12 Cary Drive. We're all on text. We had a car last week that suspiciously pulled up and within seconds, we were all talking about it and at our front doors. There's nothing that happens on that street and people are there 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So that, I, I would dispute that incredibly. It's a lovely residential area. Our children are there. I think we're all here to protect our property value. We've lived there for 11 plus years.
And you abut that property, correct?
We did, directly.
So I'm just, just throwing out there, concern on that property, because this property's come up before Ms. LaRusso bought it. When the property was up for sale, how come you didn't buy it? Take it off the market so that nobody could go and do anything?
If I had an extra 10 grand line around, I would have loved to have done that. I mean, I also didn't know when this, yeah, if I, if I had an extra 10 grand, I would do it. We actually had a Christmas party on December 1st and we all talked about pitching in a grand and buying it if it ever came back up for sale, the whole lot of us, because we're that concerned over our property value. But these are all hypotheticals. We're not in that position. If any of you have an extra 10 grand that would like to throw our way and buy the property back, we're happy to take it.
But the, I guess my other question, so, and I get that aspect of it. So then, you talk about property values. If there's a home on that property, wouldn't that not increase the values? Because now, instead of, instead of an unsightly swampy, now you have a home that is in there. Because as much as, as much as they say that they can't guarantee that it won't, they can't guarantee that it will affect your property either.
If my property starts, are we allowed to show you the pictures of our backyard?
Not at the moment, but I, we've been out there.
So once my property starts flooding, I mean, right, our sump pump is keeping up with it, which we just replaced, which almost every around us has replaced theirs because they're running nonstop.
It is wet. It is wet inside of a standard sump pump.
The minute our property floods regularly, we're done, we'll never get the resale value of what we bought that house for. The mold issues, the, it's, we're done for. And you just said to me, you can't give me any assurance.
Not me, the town of Merrimack.
Okay, the town of Merrimack will, will stand behind nothing. So you grant it, we flood, we're SOL. I mean, they are asking for a variance because they do not meet the guidelines that this town established for septic systems. I am asking you as a resident, as a taxpaying resident, not to grant it because of the potential damage to my property and all of the property around us. If they met the criteria, they wouldn't be here asking for a variance.
That, I, that, I won't, I won't dispute with you.
So I, there are no assurances. We're just going to hope for the best. I guess I would ask that the town not grant the variance because they don't meet the criteria for where the septic is placed.
I'm actually going to get clarification on that in a minute, but I understand what you're saying.
If you couldn't build because you didn't meet the criteria, then we wouldn't have a ZBA. We wouldn't have a variance or a special exception portion in the law. The variance is established so that if you have a particular site that doesn't meet the criteria, but that they can prove sufficient hardship and they don't have to prove that they can't or that they won't impact your property, but they, it's more a matter of you have to prove that they will rather than they won't. But the variance is built in there so that you can take a piece of property that doesn't quite fit the mold, but it makes sense based on what they're proposing and that's why the variance is there. Now, it's not perfect. And like I said, if we didn't have a variance process, then if you, if you had a property, and it could be your property at one point, didn't meet the criteria, then you couldn't build on it and you had no recourse. That's why we have a variance in the law. And so they have five criteria that they have to come in and they have to establish to say, on this property, we meet these five criteria and so therefore we should be granted a variance to allow this. And that's what we're dealing with here. You guys, all of you in that area have water issues. There's no question. But the question is, or the, what we're trying to establish is if this property is built, will exacerbate what you've got there? Or could it be acceptable based on what they want to do? We can't say you've got, you've got water issues now and so therefore we can't let anybody in any of that area do anything because you've already got water issues.
Right, and I think the last time, the first time we came, I had asked a question and we were told it was because it's grandfathered.
No.
No, 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 can I finish?
Yep.
The question was whether or not it was an actual buildable lot in today's standards. And I believe we got clarification that it was zoned in the 70s. So that is the law that pertains to it. You can't reevaluate whether it's an actual buildable lot in today's standards, 2018 standards.
Well, it is, it is a lot of record. And in order to build on it, they have to either comply with setback, buffer, all of those requirements, or come before us for a variance to say, and it's, whether it's a foot or it's 10 feet or, you know, we deal with variances all the time. And whether a specific lot can be built depends on whether it fits the criteria or whether they can get a variance. And in order to get a variance, they have to prove these five criteria. We're a semi-judicial board here. We're not like the planning board where we've got objectivity and judgment. We're really a lot more legally bound by these five criteria. And so it's a little bit different than when you go before planning board. And if they meet those five criteria, in our opinion, based on your feedback as well as what they're presenting, then they're allowed to build on that. Then they're allowed to build on that lot with what they're proposing. And. That, that's what it's all based on.
Okay, so I, I understand that. So we will. There is no potential and I understand this, I, I, I guess it's a rhetorical question for an unpartial environmental assessment to be done. So we will take the word of somebody hired by the proponent and we'll all gamble. Our properties and our homes and the safety of them with mold and flooding. That's, I guess that's kind of what I'm understanding. We, it was denied two other times. We're asking for our town folks, our elected officials are to look out for our interests.
We're not elected, but okay, I understand what you're saying.
You're right, I'm not an expert in this.
It was, it was denied before. With different criteria. And they have come forward with different plans, with different criteria, with different information. And whether the expert was hired by them or by us or by you or anybody else. We can only take the testimony that we're given and base our judgment based on that testimony.
Thank you. Yes, please.
You live in a neighborhood, you have history in the neighborhood and you seem to observe them. Would you say there, there was more water this year than in past years or is it?
Substantially.
Yeah.
Pretty much the same in every year or?
Uh, uh, we regularly get, um, at least two to three events a year. That, um, make substantial, uh, I would say, you know. Three to four inch deep water on a good portion of our backyard. This particular year, um, has, we have had at least two flooding events where. Our foundation became saturated and our sump pumps could not keep up. In the 11 years that we've been there. Last one was, everybody knows or calls it the Mother's Day flood, I think it was. Yeah, right. Big monster pile of days of rain. But this November was, I believe, three times the typical amount of rain for this area. Um, and I've never seen our backyard as full as it has been for as long as it's been. And it has not gone away.
This year?
Yep, yep. It hasn't moved. It's still there.
You know why?
Hmm?
Because we're running 130% of normal. One third more than a normal year.
This is true. My concern is also that. You know, I'm, I'm not here to debate climate science, but nothing's getting any better anywhere. So any, any kind of weather related event. It's, it's gonna get worse. We're gonna be dealing with these kind of issues all over the town in a, in a, in an increased magnitude and there's a lot of science to prove it. So. I would agree with you on that because, yeah. Yeah. Well, I have issues as well. Yeah, yeah. So it's, I, I, I'm not gonna bank anything on the fact that, okay, this was a fluke. And it'll all get back to normal. Like, it's just, it's been getting worse, so. Thank you. Does anybody else like to speak against? You may come up and add something.
You mentioned about clearing the land out back there?
Yes.
Uh, that was done at one time and they left tons of branches. Um, one of the biggest things that they wiped out completely were all these beautiful lady slippers. When they crushed all that stuff and destroyed it. So I just got concerned about that last time, a year ago I mentioned that. And so they did clear cut a chunk of that land at one point in time, so that was done already. That thus, water levels have, to me, have been rising since that time.
They have or haven't?
Have.
Yeah.
That's the concern.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak against?
Good evening.
Evening.
Um, my name is Christina Covielo. I've been here several times before when the first gentleman tried to build on the property about a year ago or so.
What's your address?
Uh, I live at 145 Babusak Lake Road. I'm the backyard abutter to this property in question.
Okay.
I did have a question about photos. I know that Julie and Aiden that were just spoke, asked about their photos to be viewed. What would, is there a way that if we had photos that we would be able to submit them to show for? If in the future, just if we ever wanted to show something, how do you submit that or make it available for submission?
Uh, upon getting notice of the hearing, I would, uh, submit the photos to, uh, community development. So the community development could make sure they're distributed. However, uh, part of our responsibilities are to do site visits. So all of us here have been in that area and have seen the properties. You know, may have even seen some of us trudge through your properties, but, um, we, we have been out and seen, and seen those areas. So that's part of our responsibility for sitting on this board is to make, uh, personal site visits.
Oh, okay.
They just can't be done, you should submit them prior to the meeting. They just can't be done the night of the meeting.
Oh, okay. So you guys have all walked through my backyard, like the abutting, like the, the abutting lines that meet the properties. Have you been, I'm just wondering if you?
I've walked, I've walked the property, that property.
That property, okay, okay. So I was just wondering, um, because I just feel like in the future, if I had to come back, I'd like to be able to do that because I, I. Unfortunately have a whole boatload of photos of my son in, um, boots that go past his knees and you could see the water clearly almost covering his boot. I, I just wanted to say that, um, Julie and Aiden almost said almost all of what I wanted to, to say, so I don't want to be redundant. But I share the same concern, um, with the water issues and where it's gonna go if there is a slab placed there. The displacement of the water and also the septic system being closer than what's, uh, normally allowed. Where that extra water will go. So I just wanted to share that concern and that. Um, put that out there again because that's my major concern with the property being built on, not having a new neighbor, but the water.
Okay, thank you. Very much, I appreciate that. Does anybody else like to speak, make any comments? Okay. If you'd like to come back up.
Thank you. Um, I'm taking notes and I want to address their abutter concerns. Um, I'm gonna go a little bit of out of order. First, I wanna, I wanna stress a, a property law principle. Because I, I think what I'm hearing is, is they want some assurance, right? That what we're gonna do. We will build according to the plan that we've submitted, according to the stormwater management, um, measures that have put into place and implemented in that plan. In, inherent in property law is the proposition that. Somebody has the right to develop their property, they own their property, but they can't do so to the nuisance and to the detriment of the other. So there's a balancing act at play here. We're conscious of that and we're not proposing to do something that's gonna cause a nuisance. There are civil remedies if that's the case. So it's not like that they don't have any kind of recourse. Second, with regard to the septic plan, the septic plan that was prepared by Meridian was for the prior applicant. The prior applicant, um, took some creative license, if you will, with their submission to the board back in 2017. And they superimposed the wetlands delineation, delineation and the flagging of the wetlands on that plan. The plan, the septic design that Ms. LaRusso is going to build. It hasn't been fully developed because it's part of this plan in terms of its location from the side, from the side property line. It is not going to be built on top of Mr. Driscoll's septic. We can't do that. Meridian would be foolish to recommend and submit a plan that had a septic built too close or on top of another plan.
So are you, I, so the variance for the septic sys, septic system 10 feet from the side property. Is that still in play?
It is.
If we're talking a different plan?
No, 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 it's still in play. It would be, it, it, as shown on the plan where it is. The, it, there, I referenced in our application material, the previous septic design.
Just, Mr. Driscoll, I, I fully see, I, I just, I, I fully, I see it. Okay, thank you.
So the, the septic design that we included in our application was, and I, I referenced it in a footnote, that it was submitted by the prior applicant. The plan as we've submitted to you, it would be 10, 10 feet from the side, um, line where 20 feet is required.
Where is that in relation to Mr. Driscoll's, uh, septic?
I was gonna say that, go ahead. We have that plan here. I don't know if his septic is, is shown on, on our plan.
It, it actually is, uh, Mr. Chairman. Uh, if you look, uh, the notation of 5B dash 177. You'll see that there's a vent symbol with an, uh, with an approximate leach field. Square and a dashed line.
Hold on a second, 5B 177?
Yes.
Give me one minute to catch up to you.
It's behind tab two, the plan, and I, I gave copies, the 11 by 17 copies of the plan.
Alright.
So above and to the left, the dimension that says 171.83, you see a little vent symbol? Candy cane?
We have a full sized plan if that happens.
That is the vent for his leach field.
That's the vent for his leach field.
For his leach field and the rectangle, uh, is approximately where his leach field is based on what we observed in the field. Now, one thing I want to, um, back up and make sure everybody understands, because Ms. LaRusso has. Has gone through some, some major efforts here to make sure this is correct. We have done a boundary survey on this property. When we did the former septic design out here for the former owner, he did not authorize us to do a boundary survey. We did the septic design based on a best fit scenario that, which is standard operating practice for a septic designer. We do not hold a surveyor stamp. So that former plan was done. In a way as a preliminary, um, evaluation whether we could get it approved by the state. And in fact, it was approved by the state. We had informed the former owner of the property. You now need to do a boundary survey. To make sure that what we have proposed and have approved by the state is legitimate. Because we don't want the leach field off the lot and you don't want to be building on somebody else's lot. That owner chose not to do that. We were not part of the last submission to this board. And I guess it was 2017?
Yeah, May of 2017 was the prior applicant.
So, so. The, the, that plan that was submitted was to some extent misrepresented. We, we did not create that plan. There were parts of our plan that were put together with other materials and submitted without us even knowing about it.
So, and I appreciate the clarification. So what I'm looking at here, 5B 177, I see Mr. Driscoll's, uh, approximate septic tank area. And I see, so I see the driveway and then I see potential tank and leach field, which is next to the house. Now, according to this, what I'm seeing here, on the, what you, what you've represented to us, is that. You're probably, geez, I don't know, ballpark 20, 30 feet from his? Is that correct?
That is correct. Uh, we've maintained 10 feet to the property line. Um, his septic system is more like seven, five to seven. I don't have a scale, but it's, it's closer.
So his, he's about five to seven feet from the, the set, from the, from the property line?
From the common property.
And you're 10 feet from the property line, so call it 17, 10 plus 7, right?
It's on a diagonal, so the leach fields are probably more like 20 feet apart.
20 feet apart.
Right, and I will also note that, uh, although this is not germane to the town. Uh, the state does allow a leach field new to be five feet from a lot line.
Okay. But this one here is gonna be 10 feet.
10 feet.
And it's gonna be 20 feet from his. So there shouldn't be any interference between leach fields?
No, there should not.
Okay, thank you. Is there anything else that you wanted to add?
I do if you're done.
Well, I, I think you probably can speak to your credentials. He's not a hired gun. Our law firm did not hire him. Mrs. LaRusso hired him. She's very serious about the plan. He's a licensed certified wetland scientist and I can let him attest to that and what his ethical standards are with regard to submitting a plan to the board.
Right, right, so I did want to address that because. You know, all professionals are perceived that way in some fashion. You know, we heard from a, uh, a, a real estate appraiser earlier that I thought addressed the comments very well. And I, I, I commended him on that. He was very, very much to the point of how he has to act. And I, my brother was a real estate appraiser for a while and I thought what he had to say was, was very, very, uh. Strictly in accordance with how he has to act professionally, which is an ethical thing to do. I'm held to those same standards as his counsel here. These methods that we're proposing are state approved methods. They're recognized as being acceptable methods to infiltrate water. These are routinely used in our, in our shoreline permits to show the state, this is how we're dealing with it. It's not questioned. It is a approved method, um, that's used by many other consultants.
But there's nothing that you can, but you can't make, I don't wanna say guarantee, because that's not the right word. But you can't. Draw conclusions as to the effect that this would have on other people's property, surrounding property.
What I can tell you is that these methods will infiltrate 100% of the rainwater that is currently falling on the lot. So we have provided a method for water that falls on the driveway to go into the ground as it currently does. We have provided a method for the rainfall that will fall on the roof to go into the ground as it currently does. We heard two or maybe three abutters again, talking about their sump pumps running, running, running. We aren't doing that. We're not pumping water out of the ground and putting it on the surface for it to run on to John's lot next door or whoever that happens to be. You know, the, the concept of I can fill my lot five feet and make it somebody else's problem. Sure, you can. But you can resolve that by using these exact practices we're using. If you raise your, your, your yard five feet, but you put infiltration trenches on your drip edges, the water's going nowhere. And although you may have added five feet to your yard, you've now improved the situation. So that water that was currently running off your yard goes now into the ground and gets recharged instead of running off. So, um, I, I didn't, I didn't really understand that, that, where that was going. You know, the leach field, I've got no concerns at all about this. You know, this is a two bedroom home. I doubt there's any two bedroom homes in that neighborhood. I guarantee they're all, I can't guarantee it, but I'd be amazed if there were other two bedroom homes, so mostly three and four. So the homes that, the home that we're proposing here is as small as you can possibly permit. So the water that's going in, out of the, out of the, uh, Pemchuck Water System into the house and then back into the ground. Yeah, you're using some water there and that's going into the ground, but it is going into the ground. This is a pre-treatment system. It's like a municipal treatment system in a box. So you're taking effluent and you're putting it through a septic tank. Then you're putting it through a processor which has a bubbler and a recirculator. It aerates and treats that water before it goes into the leach field. You're essentially putting nearly clean water into the leach field. None of these other houses around there have that. So this is state of the art equipment, again. So, you know, when I talk about this property being a model, sit, a model home, I, I'm serious about that. And I wouldn't say that if I, if I thought that wasn't the case. You know, it is a, it is a lot with hardship. That's why we're here. But the methods we are proposing on this thing for the stormwater and the septic are the best you can do. And I, I couldn't sit here ethically in front of you and say that if I didn't believe it. I'm under oath and I very much believe in these and this is what I do for, for a profession.
Is there anything else that you wanted to add?
Uh, no.
No, unless the board has questions for me.
I actually have a question for Ms. LaRusso. Is it possible?
Sure.
Hi.
Hello.
Appreciate your patience.
Yes.
Given, given a lot of the hoops that you've jumped through, Ben, you've jumped through quite a few, and listening to the people that you're, could potentially be your neighbors, you, I mean, do you have any concerns? I mean, after listening to, I mean, they've, they've been pretty vehemently against you building the home. And you're looking to build a home and, and be in a neighborhood, and they, they seem to be pretty against that. So, I guess my question is, do you, I mean, I mean, what, I'm just curious as to what your, what your thoughts are on that. I'm just, because it, it just, it always strikes me, I've always, and I don't go out on a little edge here. I mean, I, over the last year, I've watched a lot of cases come in and watched a lot of neighbors go at each other. And I'm just curious as to, what are your thoughts on that?
I've heard a couple of times from the abutters, few that aren't here tonight, that they're not against the house. They're not against having a neighbor, which kind of warms my heart a little bit.
Good.
Because if they were, that would be, that would be not a good situation to be in. And I, I honestly understand their concerns about the water. But after listening to all of them tonight, and the last time we were here, I'm, I'm a little concerned that the water that they're pumping out of their houses, that the sump pumps are running all the time, and they're surrounding me, that they may end up flooding my property.
Right.
So, I'm, I'm considering, you know, putting in measures that will keep my water that comes onto my house, runs off my roof, runs off my driveway. I'm putting in measures to keep it on my property. That should not affect them at all. And we've heard from Mr. Carr that indeed, 100% infiltration will happen. So, I feel pretty confident after seeing his plans and listening to him tonight, because I haven't really talked to him at length about this. I mean, I hired him. I asked him to give his, you know, assessment of the property, the soil types and all of that, and my ideas on swales and rain barrels and all of that. And, and he put this plan together, and I think it's a solid plan that I intend to follow if given the chance. But I would like to live in the neighborhood. It's a great location. I think the property is really nice, in spite of all the mosquitoes and ticks that they're telling me are there. I don't intend to clear-cut it. I want to keep it natural, and as natural as possible, without doing any damage, minimal adjustment to the, the area where the house is gonna be, where the septic's gonna be, and leave the rest alone. But I, I really think it's that point where some people tonight, and some people in the last meeting, mentioned first, before they spoke, that we're not against the house, we're not against having a neighbor. And that, that really kind of makes me think that this would be nice if it worked out.
Thank you. Any other final comments?
No, unless you have questions for us.
Any questions? Any final comments from anybody else? Mr. Driscoll, why don't you come back up? Thank you very much.
Thank you guys for letting me talk again. I know it's been a long night for everybody. And again, I, I don't want to go over something that is only my concern. But, and I know, you know, they made it clear that the septics are different. I was looking at a map that was posted online that didn't show that, because what, what I had seen, they were building past that tree line, and my septic is right abutted to that tree line. So, if it went past that. That said, if, you know, I come out one day and somebody is digging that up, what is, what is my recourse at that particular time?
You call the town.
Yeah.
Okay.
Don't hesitate.
You call, you call, do you get on the phone, Community Development, real quick?
And then, secondly, I just did want to state that, and I, I'm sorry, and I know that they did, they did mention that, you know, it'd be uncommon to have a two-bedroom home in the area. My bed, my house is a two-bedroom home.
Oh, okay.
So, it does have, it does have a septic made for a two-bedroom home. And when I purchased it, you know, I do have a roommate, because it helps me out, you know? And I have, you know, my girlfriend lives with me, or she, we're getting there, we're getting there. But my, my point is, I brought this up to, because the first thing I did, it was a bank-owned home that I purchased. So, the first thing I did is, is I wanted to make sure the septic was safe. So, I had somebody come over and they inspected the septic for me. He made it abundantly clear that, you know, be careful about when you do run your laundry. Don't run your laundry and have everyone shower the same day. Make sure you're spacing all that stuff out, because this was built for a two-bedroom home. Anything above and beyond that, having these two people in there, maybe three, you know, you could see, could see issues with your septic. So, I just wanted to make that clear. Again, I'm not an expert in, in septic sciences or whatnot, or environmental sciences. But with the two being so close and it being a wetland, and, you know, already having that concern, if, you know, what, what that would do for me going forward, you know, if, if I do see, you know, again, increased, increased flooding in my septic, because I do have a septic alarm, which luckily, you know, it hasn't gone off yet, because I am very cautious with that. You know, if I do see that septic alarm going off, and I'm seeing increased flooding in my septic system, you know, again, what is my recourse? Now, I have to call the town. Is that the same type of recourse?
No, I mean, you, you, you face, you say, you face the same issues as anybody who has.
As everyone else.
Well, no, 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 let me finish.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You face the same issues as anyone else has a septic. I mean, I've, I've lived in homes that have septic. You have to be careful when you run the laundry, and when you do the showers. You do have to be careful of that, because you can overwhelm a, a septic system. I, especially, you know, and you're absolutely right. If somebody is digging up your septic system, you call the town, you know, and you, you let them know. And I mean, that, that's, that, that goes without saying. If your septic alarm goes off, that's, I mean, you gotta kind of evaluate what's going on in your home, as to why that's going on.
No, I understand. But my, my point is, if, you know, regular runway, what's been happening, and due to after building, after them building, you know, I'm seeing that my septic is starting to flood due to runoff of water and increased water running to my septic, you know, it, I mean, I, I guess, I answer my own question, because that would put me in the same boat as my, as my neighbors, where they could build, do whatever. There's no instance there. But it's a concern that I also wanted to bring up.
Sure, sure. No, I, I agree. I understand what you're saying.
Well, yeah, that, that's, that's all I have for you guys.
Okay.
Thank you again.
Any further questions or comments, or else? Any other further comments or questions from the people? I'm gonna close the public hearing. Discussions from the board. Todd? Kathy, Rod, sorry. Kathy? Todd, close enough, yeah. Drew? Thomas Lawrence? So, we have, the first is the variance under Section 2.02.6 of the zoning ordinance to permit the construction of a single-family home. If there's no comments or questions on that, can I have a motion, please?
Also move that we grant the variance under Section 2.02.7.6 of the zoning ordinance to permit the construction of a single-family dwelling twenty, this is the right one, yeah, twenty-three feet from a wetland area, whereas forty feet is required. The parcel is located at 12 Carey Drive in the R1 Residential in Aquifer Conservation Districts, tax map 5B, Lot 176, Case Number 2018-30. Yep, subject to conditions in the staff memo, and subject to, I gotta find my, my criteria.
No, you got it. Should the board grant the grants, staff recommends that it be conditioned upon the board granting the petitions and cases.
Oh, yes. Yeah, that was, that was subject to the, I was looking for the, the other.
Yeah, no, that's the one.
Okay. Okay.
Rod, seconds? I have one question before we put a vote to this. Kelly, is Conservation Committee weighed in on this? Okay.
Sorry, I don't believe they need to.
I didn't know if they need to. Alright, so Rod, seconded it. All favor of approving the petition or the variance, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Five zero zero. Variance is approved. Next variance, special exception under Section 2.02.7A4 dot four of the zoning ordinance to permit the construction of a single-family dwelling within the 25-foot wetland buffer. Parcel is located at 12 Carey Drive in the R1 Residential in Aquifer Conservation Districts, tax map 5B, Lot 176, Case Number 2018-31. Counsel, do you want to speak on this?
This is the special exception.
Yes.
And I could go through the criteria.
Is this what you went through on the original hearing?
No, we never.
Okay, then, that's good.
Right, we didn't get to the special exception criteria.
Yep.
So, we submitted in our application for the special exception, following the format that the board had asked. The applicant shall address the, the purpose and intentions outlined in Section 2.02.7 parenthetical two of the zoning ordinance. Starting with A, A is to prevent the development of structures and other land uses on or adjacent to wetlands that would contribute to pollution of surface and groundwater. The proposed use will not conflict with this purpose, because the plan is to build the 24-by-25-foot home on the property. Again, it's showing on the plan its location, so it would be built in the dry upland portion of the lot, away from the wetlands and as far away from the buffers as possible. We still need the special exception, because we encroach into that buffer zone. The house, as we've talked about, is going to be built on a concrete slab foundation. No perimeter drains. So, the plan is not going to contribute to the pollution of the surface or the groundwater, nor will it create a negative impact on the wetlands. There will be no dredging, no filling, no altering or draining of the existing wetlands. And the plan, as you've heard tonight from Mr. Carr, has been carefully considered with sort of unique issues on the lot with regard to the water and how to mitigate those concerns with the storm water management measures that are in place. Part B is to prevent the destruction and degradation of the natural wetlands that provide flood protection. The proposed use will not conflict with this purpose, because, it's not gonna conflict with this purpose, because it's going to prevent the destruction, it's, it's going to preserve the wetlands in their existing state. Again, like I said, we're not altering the wetlands. We're building as far away from the wetlands as possible. The lot is unique because of the configuration of the wetlands and the, and the buildable envelope we have with which to work. You know, to, to reiterate and to be somewhat redundant, I apologize, but the, the home was designed for this particular lot and the unique circumstances on this lot, given where, what the parameters are, were with regard to how they could, how we could locate the house and the placement of the septic. And those, those features and those designs that are implemented in that plan are consistent with preserving and not interfering with the natural wetlands. Part C, to prevent unnecessary or excessive expenses to the town to provide and maintain essential service and utilities which arise because of inharmonious use of wetlands and adjacent upland areas. The proposed use will not conflict with this purpose, because, it's not gonna conflict with this purpose, because it's gonna be in harmony with the existing wetlands, the, the adjacent upland area and the adjacent lots. The plan is designed for this particular lot in mind and the, the water issues in place. It's not gonna place any undue municipal, you know, undue impact, negative impact on the municipal resources of the town. It's public sewer, public water, I apologize, but the septic and the location of it, where it is, isn't going to, you know, create issues for the town to then maintain and control. The plan we have in place takes those issues with regard to the storm management measures that we have to contain those issues.
Any questions?
And then last is part D, is the, to encourage those uses that can be appropriately and safely located in and around the wetlands area. The proposed use will not conflict with this, because that's precisely what the plan does. It looks at the particular lot. Where can we build? Where can we safely and appropriately put a house and a septic on this lot? And that's what we've submitted in the plan on its location to place this.
Questions? Open up the public hearing. Is there anybody that can speak in favor of the special exception to permit a dwelling within 25 feet of the wetland buffer? Is there anybody that'd like to speak against the petition? I'm gonna close the public hearing. Discussion from the board? Rod? Discussion items. Drew? Kathy? Lynn?
I think we've discussed.
Alright, can I have a motion, please?
Also move we grant the special exception under Section 2.02.7. A dot four of the zoning ordinance to permit the construction of a single-family dwelling within the 25-foot wetland buffer. Parcel is located 12 Carey Drive in the R1 Residential in Aquifer Conservation District, tax map 5B, Lot 176, Case 2018-31, subject to it being conditioned on the board granting the petition in case 2018-32.
Second, second, okay. Second from Rod. Okay. So, okay, this time around, guys, let's get late. We vote, I need to see hands in every king, alright? Okay. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Five zero zero. Lorraine L. A. Russo, petition of her variance under Section 3.02.4 of the zoning ordinance to permit the installation of a septic system 10 feet from the side property line, whereas 20 feet is required. The parcel is located at 12 Carey Drive in the R1 Residential in Aquifer Conservation Districts, tax map 5B, Lot 176, Case Number 2018-32. It's on, it's, I mean, yeah, it's on you.
Okay, that's, that's fine, and I'll defer to the board. I mean, like I said, when I submitted the application, the analysis for the variance criteria was addressed for both of them, both the wetland setback and the septic setback. I am happy to go through that again. I know it was read into the record already. I, I, I certainly don't want to beat a dead horse, but if there's questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Questions from the board?
Can, can we make this subject to what was read into the record originally?
As long as nothing has changed in this application from what was read before.
No, well, no, nothing was changed from the application, and then the reapplication that was submitted, I sent to Robert Price as a PDF, because I know he said he usually embeds that right into the record.
Yes, okay.
Okay.
So, we're gonna, that's read into record.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, again, the public hearing, is there anybody that'd like to speak for this petition? Is there anybody that'd like to speak against this petition? Okay, so I'm gonna close the public hearing. Discussion items from the board. Any discussion items? Do I have a motion?
You wanna do it?
Yeah.
Okay.
I moved that the board grant the variance to Lorraine A. Russo under Section 3.02.4 of the zoning ordinance to permit the installation of a septic-
to permit the installation of a septic system 10 feet from the side property line, whereas 20 feet is required. The parcel is located at 12 Cary Drive in the R1 Residential in Aquifer Conservation Districts. Tax map 5B, Lot 176, Case Number 2018-32.
Okay, and there, there's no criteria.
There's no criteria, because it's 3-2, what's a criteria?
Uh, we have a second from Drew? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? 5-0-0. Thank you very much. Thank you for your patience to-
Thank you.
Be kind to your neighbor.
Hopefully, they'll be kind to you. All right, hey, 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 sit.
Sit, pirate, sit.
I'm sorry to hear that. All right.
More information than I need.
Let's just, two minutes, let everybody clear out. I got some stuff to say.
This is, this is second night.
First of all, Fran and Rich, you guys missed a daisy. Um, all right, so, I'm totally lost. Uh, all right, anything from, uh, Community Development? Nothing from Community Development, okay. Um, thank you very much, everybody, for sticking in. I knew they, Community Development got us with two, two good ones this evening.
Minutes?
I'm gonna, I'm getting to that.
Okay, just a reminder, friendly reminder.
Hey, I still got mic time. It's not 12 o'clock yet. All right. Approval to, uh, uh, um- Discussion in the minutes for November 28, 2018. Any, any questions, concerns?
I move we approve as printed.
Okay, motion by Lynn, second by Drew. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Negatively approved. Since there's no other discussion items, everybody-
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Seconded by Kathleen. Everybody have a great holiday. Thank you very much. Next meeting is January 30.